Good evening, welcome to the April 1st Bellevue City Council Council Meeting. I was trying to think of a joke and I can't think of a good joke. I just won't do one. Okay, so we'll start with the flag salute. Councilmember Newen House, could you lead us, please?
All rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have something very exciting today. We're swearing in our new councilmember Claire Suma-Dwaria. And so who is going to lead this? Okay Charmaine, I'll hand it off to you then.
I have been appointed to the office of City of Bellevue Council, position number five.
I've been duly appointed to the office of City of Bellevue Council, position number five.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
The duties of this office
The duties of this office
As prescribed by law and to the best of my ability
Prescribed by law and to the best of my ability
And that I will support and maintain the constitutions of the state of Washington
And that I will support and maintain the constitutions of the state of the Washington
And of the United States of America
And of the United States of America
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Councilmember Suma-Dwaria. I think we'll come down and have some pictures. Can we do that and let her have some pictures as well? Okay, let's do the roll calls. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Mayor Robinson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian will be joining us virtually later in the meeting. Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Newen House.
Here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmember Suma-Dwaria.
Here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the -- oh. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you Mayor. There are six pre-registered speakers this evening, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time for oral communications is not to exceed 30 minutes and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first and then if time remains, people speaking to items not on tonight's agenda will be called. In each of those categories, the presiding officer has authorization to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days or who will be speaking to items that will come on the council agenda within the next 60 days. Each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will call our first speaker. Actually, I believe the first three want to come up together, though each of them only gets the three minutes. That's Ben Mickle, Cameron Cast, and Valentina Vaniva.
Hello, I'm Ben Mickle. I'm a resident of downtown Bellevue. And we're speaking here today for Eastside Urbanism about Vision Zero. We sent you a PDF presentation and provided a handout to go along with our comments. At Eastside Urbanism, we're passionate about street safety because many of us have experienced dangerous close calls. For example, I was recently walking home from the grocery store and a car had to swerve to avoid hitting me in a crosswalk at Bellevue Way and Northeast First Street. The street's design encouraged the driver to speed over the crosswalk without checking for pedestrians. We hear about Vision Zero in City Hall, but these kind of experiences are still too common. So, for three weeks in March, we conducted a survey to ask members of our community which strategies the City of Bellevue should prioritize in its Vision Zero Action Plan. 234 people responded. Seventy-five percent were people who had never even participated in our group. On a scale from 1 to 5, they rated 51 strategies such as leading pedestrian intervals, no ride on red, and roundabouts. Looking at the top-rated survey items, Redmond's new Safe Streets Action Plan includes four of the top six. Seattle's Vision Zero Action Plan includes six of the top 10. On the other hand, Bellevue's 2025 Vision Zero Action Plan, including the Speed Management Plan, has none of the top 13. Instead, Bellevue's plans include each of the six lowest-rated strategies. To be fair, Bellevue is broadly implementing some of our top strategies such as mixed-use zoning and leading pedestrian intervals, but those things aren't acknowledged or prioritized in the Vision Zero Action Plan. So let's look at the top 10 from our survey. Number one, protected bike lanes. Eighty-five percent of respondents gave this idea five stars, and for good reason. Studies show they make our streets safer for everyone. They provide a safe, affordable, efficient transportation option that makes our city clean quieter. Having separated lanes is popular with drivers, too, as they don't have to maneuver around slower bicycles. We should follow the guidance of the new edition of NACCO's Urban Bike Way Design Guide, which was just published this year. The City of Bellevue is even acknowledged as one of its contributors. If you want to build world-class bike infrastructure, this book will tell you how to do that. Number two, pedestrian streets. Permanently closing a section of a normal street to cars so that it can be used as a plaza for walking, shopping, dining, and playing is great for safety and it builds community, too. Eighty percent of respondents gave this five stars. The city should embrace and cultivate that community spirit by creating some pedestrian streets. Let's put them in the plan. Val?
My name is Valentina and I live in Crossroads, Bellevue. I commute almost entirely by transit and bicycle and Vision Zero is important for me because crashes happen all the time in crossroads. Just in the last 10 days, there were, excuse me, at least two crashes on the block I live on, on the northeast A Street. The first one, the single car crash, with the two cars crashing into each other at an intersection, was so common that it was not considered newsworthy. I cross that intersection several times a week and so I understand why the next three items from the survey results are about transit and intersections. The number three item is more transit service. Studies show that transit-oriented communities have one-fifth of the per capita crash injury rate as car-oriented communities. Doing great work here, especially with the light rail, and these efforts are highly valued by our community. Intersection daylighting, our number four item, means cars from 25 feet of an intersection so that the block driving, pedestrians, cyclists, and other vehicles. Nobody thinks it's a good idea to obstruct diverse vision at intersections. Bellevue's solution to this in most places has been to just put up a no parking sign, but as the pictures in our slides document, this isn't a reliable solution. We need more than just a sign. Large rocks and planters could cheaply and reliably solve the problem overnight. This is a low-hanging fruit and a no-brainer for the action plan. Next, we have leading pedestrian intervals. Bellevue has implemented this in some places, including some intersections in crossroads. Our survey shows it has been quite popular, so let's put it in the plan officially. Also, Vision Zero goes beyond the Department of Transportation. We need to account for street safety in our land use code. As mixed-use zoning came in sixth on our survey, Bellevue should follow WashDOT's recommendation to adopt safe land use as the sixth component of the safe system approach. Temporarily closing streets to cars will open them up for farmers' markets, annual festivals, and neighborhood block parties. People love these events and the safety they provide. That's why street closures for events came seventh in our rankings.
Hey, everyone. My name is Cameron Cast. I live in the Bridle Trails area of Bellevue and I live, work, and commute here as well. The implementations highlighted by Ben and Valentina today and in this survey are vital to a safe and thriving community and they're critical Division Zero commitments. I personally benefited from previous infrastructure improvements such as protected bike lanes on 108th Avenue and additions to transit service. Due to these improvements, I've been able to live car light in Bellevue for over three years in a safe and sustainable way, but there's still more work to be done. Nearly daily, I see the impacts of dangerous streets on our community and I have personally had to take alternative routes in the name of safety due to high vehicle speeds, lack of viable protection, and poor visibility. And I want to continue to invest in our city to make it a safe and beautiful place for people of all ages and all abilities to thrive. Getting back to the survey, how do you create an intersection that keeps bikes separated from cars? Use the next item, protected intersections, which minimize bicycle and vehicle conflicts just like protected bike lanes do. They're widely recommended by transportation experts and they deserve to be part of any good action plan. The next item on our survey was neighborhood greenways, which they can be a useful tool for neighborhood streets with low volumes and very low speeds, but we caution that these are not a substitute for safe bicycle infrastructure on arterials because most of Bellevue's neighborhood streets have been designed to be disconnected. Bellevue's proposal on Northeast Second by Downtown Park is an example of how relying on sharrows, as greenways do, can be abused to the detriment of safety because it does not meet NACCO's criteria for low traffic volume. But Vision Zero isn't just about bikes and pedestrians. It's also about eliminating deadly car crashes on our streets. According to the Federal Highway Administration, our 10th ranked survey item, which is road diets, are one of the most effective ways to do that. They need to be a foundational component of our Vision Zero strategy. Lastly, in very last place on our survey, by a wide margin in 51st, was self-driving cars. They are designed for corporate profit and not safety and they do not belong in the Vision Zero Plan. Thank you for taking time to listen to our suggestions. We have even more thoughts that we'd love to share with you about our high-scoring survey items such as curb extensions, rapid build pilots, raised crosswalks, narrow travel lanes, no ride on red, pedestrian scrambles, and smaller curb radii. Let's work together to achieve our common goal of eliminating traffic deaths and serious injuries on Bellevue's streets. The solutions that we're proposing don't need to be expensive 20-year projects. Let's pilot them quickly and let the results speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was our third -- well, we did have all three speakers in support of Vision Zero, so we cannot take any more comments in support of Vision Zero. Our next speaker is Connor Johnson, who's joining us virtually. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Perfect. Your time begins now.
Thank you to the City of Bellevue staff for your support and to the City Council for your time today. My name is Connor Johnson. I'm representing the Brackets who own eight-plus acres of undeveloped land in the Cougar Mountain Potential Annexation Area, PAA. The Brackets have partnered with the Alexanders on this petition, who own five-plus acres of undeveloped land in the PAA. Both owners have signed pre-annexation agreements with the city to confirm service and will work with the city to extend utilities at some point in the future. We urge the council to follow city staff's recommendation and execute a petition for annexation. As council may recall, the petition was previously submitted on in August of 2022. At the time, city staff recommended council reject the NOI as resources were constrained during the 2044 comp plan update. City Council followed the advice of city staff to reject the NOI, but encouraged the Brackets and the Alexanders to resubmit once the updated comp plan was passed in 2024. Due to the hard work of city staff and city council, Bellevue has passed a visionary comp plan that positions the city to continue to excel during exponential growth driven by Amazon, Microsoft, et cetera. We hope the city will follow its mandate outlined in the comp plan, Land Use Element 49, to comprehensively annex Bellevue's remaining potential annexation area. This is a unique opportunity to address critical housing shortages in the region, either through traditional single-family homes or middle housing through HB 1110. Although a majority of Bellevue's planned growth is projected through multifamily in areas such as Wilburton, it has been difficult for developers to make large-scale multifamily projects pencil financially with increased borrowing costs, increased construction costs, limited rent growth, and unfriendly legislation such as the state bill implementing a rent cap. I make this point to outline some parcels in the PAA are undeveloped and unencumbered with little to no critical areas, so these parcels will be very attractive to home builders to add to the city housing stock immediately upon annexation. Whereas housing stock growth through multifamily may initially be slower than expected until some or all of the outlined economic factors are resolved. Again, thank you for the support of city staff and for city council's time today to consider this important matter. By following the city staff's recommendation, we encouraged council to accept the NOI petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker on the list is Dan Becker.
Thank you. Thank you, council and Madam Mayor. About 18 months ago, a City of Bellevue water main broke in front of our house in Medina, causing substantial damage to our house and putting our lives basically in chaos. The city told us verbally and writing that they're taking responsibility for the damage caused by the ruptured line. As of today, the city has taken no responsibility for our expenses, which has cost us to fork out hundreds of thousands of dollars for temporary living expenses and repairs to our house. We had to finance all that ourselves. We went through our savings and we've gone through some of our IRAs. Part of our front yard was washed away. There are about two to three feet of water in our garage, parts of our basement, and about nine to 12 inches of water in other parts of the basement and backyard. We needed to move out because of the hazards created by the floodwater and contaminants. As a result of the flood, we lost two cars, personal property in the basement, and parts of our front yard were washed away. We were told to file a claim, which we did, and then the city staff asked us to work with consultant EAS to help us repair our house. EAS came by the house at the beginning, determined the extent of the damage, and they were supposed to work with us. However, their employee rarely returned calls, missed numerous meetings that they scheduled to meet us at the house. We submitted our claim and paperwork to the city last October. We were finally able to get most of our costs together. We still haven't done all the work outside because we were focused on getting back into our house. After five months, about two weeks ago, the city staff offered us 20 cents on the dollar with no explanation as to why. We were told that they would pay us for five months even though we were out for nine months. Again, no explanation why. We're asking council and the mayor to direct staff to work with us in good faith to come up with a settlement that compensates us for our temporary living expenses and repaired damages created by the waterline break. And we also want that to be consistent with other damages that we've seen, not just in our neighborhood, but other areas within the city where we've had waterline breaks. If we're forced to take other actions, we'll be able to demonstrate the city's bad faith action in working with us. Their consultant rarely returned phone calls. They didn't even show up for months. When they did, they wanted us to cut short a vacation and come back to meet their convenience. The city's provided us with a copy of a report that was done in 2022 that said that the city's waterline in front of our house was at high risk, but we were never provided that information so that we could have even taken any mitigation matters for that. Again, we'd like to thank for your consideration and hope that you'll ask the mayor and city staff to work with us to come up with a reasonable settlement and not 20 cents on the dollar. It doesn't even pay for our expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker.
City manager, I know you will reach out to Mr. Becker for us.
Yes, we will. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker on our pre-registered list is Anne Rittenhouse.
Good evening. I'm here today to talk about the importance of community outreach. I chair the Bellevue Network on Aging and last week, we had a 30-minute presentation on curb pricing study that's being conducted by the city, which is a relatively minor issue and is not really going to affect our neighborhood. But we've had nothing on Lucca. Likewise, I'm on the board of the Newport Hills Community Club and we also have not had a Lucca presentation. Yet the Newport Neighborhood Area Plan, which will have minor impacts to our neighborhood, has been presented twice to our community. The NAP staff have also walked the neighborhood with me, scheduled three neighborhood pop-ups, and produced this huge 38-page compilation of all the discovery, comments, issues that are in our neighborhood. And what is there on Lucca? This is Lucca. A little teeny-tiny, three-page pamphlet that speaks in generalizations about Lucca and absolutely no concrete information about what Lucca is going to do to our neighborhoods. It doesn't mention the ADAs, it doesn't mention the setbacks that they're going to slice in half, it doesn't mention any of the density that's going to be a result of Lucca. Little teeny-tiny and the huge impact on neighborhoods. Staff have been meeting with developers but have not shown the courtesy to residents. On the city's website, no fewer than 50 neighborhood associations are listed, but staff could not name even one community club that they have presented Lucca to. The lack of Lucca outreach is just so disappointing and the claims that there has been any meaningful outreach at all is not truthful and is misleading to both the council and the planning commission. Considering that Lucca is so complex and will have such profound negative impacts on neighborhoods, present outreach efforts are just grossly inadequate. The draft Lucca has not involved the very citizens whom the city should be representing and protecting. It's an example of government not representing the people. Bellevue can and should do better, even if it means the city needs to install interim official controls while a more balanced and thoughtful Lucca plan can be developed, one that will include residents who are major stakeholders. That's all I'd like to say. Please reconsider this and make sure that you're reaching out to residents with this profound Lucca that is really going to hurt us all. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of our pre-registered list, so I'd ask at this point if there's anyone else joining us tonight who would like to speak to the council, please raise your hand and that includes those online. Again, as a reminder, no additional topics in support of Vision Zero.
Okay, no additional hands, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you. All right, thank you. So we have two study session items tonight, which are both information-only. I'm going to ask our city manager to introduce them.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers.
Mayor, did you want to pass the consent calendar?
I guess I do. Oh, I crossed it out. Okay, thank you for that. Hey, that was your job. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Newen House made the motion. Councilmember Stokes seconded it. Okay, so now, go ahead, city manager.
Great, thank you. This first study session is focused on the progress of the 2021-2025 Sustainable Bellevue Plan, as well as reporting on the plan update, which is currently underway. Council has significant interest in this plan and so we have also heard of community interest in both how we're doing as a community reducing our greenhouse gas emissions, as well as what actions the city will consider for the new or modified plan as it comes forward. So we're joined by Tara Johnson, Planning Director, and Jennifer Ewing, our Sustainability Manager, and one other staff person, so Anna. Oh, Anna Haggert. Okay, thank you, Anna, for joining at the table. She's our Sustainability Program Manager in the Finance and Asset Management Department. And with that, I'll hand it over to Tara.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. So we're here this evening to do a few things. We're providing the council with our quarterly update on the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. We were last before council in the fall of 2024, at the end of October, where council provided direction to launch the Sustainable Bellevue Plan Update. And so tonight, we're here to provide a little bit of an update on the progress we've made since then and then also provide council with an update on what we've done so far since we launched the plan update. So tonight's study session is for information-only. We'll be starting off our presentation by providing a little bit of background and context about the Sustainable Bellevue Plan, how we reached where we are. We'll talk a little bit about the progress we've made on the existing plan. That was something that council raised and wanted to know more about. We'll also talk about some of the results from our greenhouse gas inventory, which was released in January of this year, and then talk about some of the progress we've made since we launched the next plan update. And then conclude with next steps and talk about when we'll be back before council. So with that, I'm going to turn things over to Jennifer to kick us off.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so to kind of get started, since it's been a few months, we wanted to just sort of quickly recap what we heard from council last time we were here. We kind of highlighted a few of the key takeaways from that presentation. You know, first and foremost, I think we really heard a strong desire from council to understand what are really the high-impact actions that we can be doing to meet our adopted 2030 and 2050 goals. We heard an interest from council in understanding how we're measuring progress and demonstrating impact, which we'll speak to tonight. We heard some interest in looking at how we might broaden out our engagement, in particular with youth. And those were some of the key points. Wanted to flag those here and we'll be sort of touching on those throughout the presentation. So to take a step back, just to kind of set some context for the presentation, this graphic shows the evolution of our environmental stewardship work. The program was launched back in 2007, so really want to kind of highlight that we've been kind of building So really want to kind of highlight that we've been kind of building on that original sort of foundation we laid a couple decades ago and building that. 2020 was a real significant milestone for our sustainability work with the adoption of the Sustainable Bellevue Plan. With that, we've made some great progress in really accelerating our work and ramping up some new programs, which Anna and I will highlight in just a little bit. And then we'll also talk about how we're going to update the plan to really look at how we can continue to scale the work we've been doing. So a little background on the plan. Like I said, it was adopted by council at the end of 2020. So it's a five-year plan. We're beginning year five in implementation. So this year, we'll be working both on continuing to implement the plan while also looking at how can we update it. So of the 78 actions in the plan, we've completed 10, incorporated 41 into our ongoing operations. So a number of the actions that were in the plan aren't necessarily sort of a one-and-done thing. They're things that we, you know, will kind of continue to do more as our standard operating procedures, if you will. And then we have another 19 underway. So we've made pretty significant progress on all the actions in the plan. So the timing is right for us really to be looking at what else we can be doing. Want to highlight, this is a true one-city interdepartmental effort. The plan covers both community-wide and municipal operations actions and really touches on all city departments, in particular with the municipal operations work that Anna leads. So with that, we'll flag or highlight some of our accomplishments in different aspects of the plan, responding to kind of council's interest in sort of simplifying how we measure progress. So let me move forward here. I'm going to first highlight some of the accomplishments in the plan in buildings and energy. So we're really going to try to focus these highlights on the largest sources of emissions and our high-impact actions that we've been working on over the last several years. So buildings and energy are 49% of our city emissions. You know, our emissions are kind of primarily made up of energy use in buildings and transportation. So I'll be talking about that next. You know, as we heard really in the last council, when the plan was updated in 2020, you know, a strong desire for us to focus on high-impact strategies and a continued interest in that. To address that, for commercial energy use, we launched a new program called the Clean Buildings Incentive Program. That program has helped Bellevue's commercial buildings comply with the Washington State Clean Buildings Act. Through that program, we've benchmarked over 200 buildings' energy use, provided them with technical assistance on how to comply with the law. The law requires certain energy efficiency performance of all commercial buildings and also supported those buildings in accessing utility and state energy efficiency incentives. Our program was the first of its kind in the state and has been replicated by several others around the state. To address residential energy use, which is 20% of our greenhouse gas emissions, we launched Energy Smart Eastside. That program is focused, right now focused on incentivizing the installation of heat pumps. Why heat pumps? Because heating and cooling is the largest source of energy use in our homes. So we started there and are looking at what else we might be able to focus on next with that program and how we might scale it. To date, we've installed 156 heat pumps through our program, and the program supports different income levels and has different tracks for low-income, moderate-income, and market-rate homes, so different types of incentives and strategies. Overall, the program has helped see an increase in heat pump installations in Bellevue from 46% in 2023 to 59% in 2024. So through a lot of our marketing and outreach, we're really looking to move the market kind of across the board. And then more recently, we just launched Solarized Eastside, which is our program to support residents and businesses installing rooftop solar, taking advantage of various tax credits, and reduce costs that we have through our partner providers. So that's really what we're doing locally to help achieve our 100% renewable energy goal. So transportation emissions, excuse me, are the next highest source of emissions in Bellevue, so about 42% of our emissions. So kind of continuing the theme of really building the foundation for our work so we can scale our action. We completed several significant planning efforts over the past several years, really building on the city's transit-oriented development policies to kind of build out our plans, policies related to multimodal transportation options, including completing the Mobility Implementation Plan, Curb Side Management Plan, EV Roadmap, and adding a climate and environment element to the comprehensive plan, which includes several new climate-related policies. We've seen a real impact in Bellevue's focus on transit-oriented development in our growth centers, which has resulted in a 25% reduction in per-capita vehicle trips since 2011, which is pretty significant progress, given the high growth in jobs and housing units in Bellevue, which is great. We've also seen our commuting patterns in Bellevue rebound to pre-pandemic levels in terms of people choosing more sustainable options and how to commute to work. And then finally, our team is looking at how we can support the electric vehicle transition, which we're seeing happening more rapidly in Bellevue than other parts of the state and the country. We're already at 11% electric vehicles, and we're anticipating that to change really rapidly over the next 10 years. In about 10 years' time, about 60% of the vehicles on the car, we're anticipating, will be electric. So we're really looking at how we can access more incentives for our multifamily and commercial buildings in Bellevue to put in more EV charging infrastructure, look at where we can maybe help target outside investment to areas of Bellevue that don't have as much EV charging infrastructure. Finally, I'll highlight some accomplishments with our natural systems work. As part of the last plan update, preserving our tree canopy was really one of the top priorities that emerged. And to that end, we completed the Tree Code update last year. To also support the growth of our tree canopy, we launched the Tree Giveaway and have had four Tree Giveaways so far with support from Amazon and in partnership with 300 trees. We've distributed over 3,000 trees over the past four years. Also, really trying to focus where the trees go to, to neighborhoods that have a lower tree canopy. So really trying to layer in an equity lens in that program. We have achieved our tree canopy goal. With that said, we do want to continue to monitor how we're doing there, look at the impacts of the new Tree Code as that has a little more time to take effect, and we can see what impact that has. And then we'll continue to look at opportunities for more tree planting in neighborhoods with lower canopy. Also, our utilities department has been busy with the watershed management plan and related planning efforts, looking at really cost-effective strategies for preserving and improving the health of the streams in Bellevue. So I'll just highlight the results from the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So the most recent inventory is for 2023. I'll speak to when the next inventory will be coming. So this is the most recent data we have that was released at the beginning of this year. So 2023 was kind of an interesting year because that's really sort of our first full post-COVID year. So I think the good news here is that we are still below the baseline year. We're 8% below the baseline and also below pre-pandemic levels. We did, however, see a slight increase from 2022 to 23. Our overall citywide emissions did increase by about 4%. This was somewhat to be expected, given the, you know, increased, you know, transportation and travel as people started to return to the office more regularly. Also saw an increase in commercial energy use, again, somewhat to be expected given return to office and consistent with the trends we're seeing around the region. We do want to highlight that, you know, this reduction in emissions is in spite of the population growth of 25% from 2011 and job growth of similarly 26%. So that results, you know, when you look at our emissions from more of a per-capita basis, a reduction in per-capita emissions by 26%. So again, that really kind of takes into account the sustainable development patterns we see from our transit-oriented development and really concentrating growth in our growth centers. One other thing to flag here that you can see is that, you know, most of our emissions do come from buildings and transportation, which is why those are two of our big focus areas. And that doesn't really change from year to year. So while the emissions might vary from year to year, the really main sources of emissions don't change. So with that, oh, I just wanted to also mention we're going to start working on the 2024 inventory soon. We're expecting that in the fall. We are kind of reliant on data from a number of different sources so when all of that information is produced. So looking at a fall release of that. But again, you know, we are anxious to see what that data looks like, but we also know, you know, for our plan update, the major sources of emissions are buildings and transportation. So with that, let me hand it over to Anna to talk about how we're doing with municipal operations.
Great. Thank you, council members and Mayor Robinson. Appreciate your time tonight. If you could move to the...
Oh, sorry.
No worries. One more slide out. Great. Thanks so much. So looking at the graph, similar to the community, this shows the sectors of emissions for municipal operations. The blue line shows a 50% reduction target for 2030. And as you can see, the 2011 emissions have declined by 54% in 2023. These decreases were largely driven by efficiency in the energy sector, which is shown in shades of pink. The orange shows fleet and employee commutes as the second-largest source of emissions. Since 2022, we've seen our emissions decrease 4%. We expect that trend to continue, especially in that transportation sector. I would point out just that although COVID did occur in 2020, a lot of the emission reductions that we achieved were actually due to renewable energy use and transition away from natural gas use. You can go to the next slide, please. So how did we achieve a 67% reduction in the energy sector? 78% of renewable energy is used in our city operations. We have three solar installations on city-owned buildings, and we have one micro turbine installed in our water supply infrastructure. We've prioritized efficiency projects at buildings that have the highest energy use and identified planned projects that impact energy efficiency to be most cost-effective. For example, at Bellevue Service Center, we're replacing gas-powered equipment with electric equipment, which is expected to reduce emissions by 71% in that building alone. 100% of our traffic signals and city-owned streetlights have already been converted to LEDs, and we've done multiple LED projects at city-owned buildings. We achieved a 16% reduction in the transportation sector. 49% of our employees walk, bike, bus, or carpool to work. We expect that number to grow, especially when the light rail opens and gives us more opportunity for sustainable commute options. 3% of our light-duty fleet is already electrified, and we received a grant to install 50 EV chargers at city-owned buildings, at nine different city-owned buildings, which will give departments opportunity to further electrify their fleets. We also received a grant for our electric fire engine, which is coming this fall, which is very exciting for us, the first at the city of Bellevue. And we achieved a 3% reduction in waste management, 51% recycling rate and a 13% composting rate in city operations. And we're really working to improve the data quality to better track that number. And we think that our composting rate might actually be higher if we can improve data collection. Our construction and renovation projects have a goal to divert 50% of construction demolition waste from our landfills and a 50% target to reuse or surplus items. Let's see. The lessons learned from these type of GHG reduction projects have led to situations that impact climate resiliency. So one thing that we want to address in our plan update is how we want to address climate risks. For example, transitioning from natural gas to electricity impacts our generator capacity. So that's something that we want to build into our future planning efforts to make sure that we're able to respond post-recovery. And yeah, we plan to just maintain investments in replacing our gas-powered equipment and transitioning our fleet and buildings to renewable energy. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. So I will present on the plan update. Our plan update project manager, Justice Stewart, was intended to present on this. He's actually out sick, so I'm going to fill in. So get to hear from me a little more. So wanted to kind of recap, just to set the stage, what the objectives of the plan update are that we shared with council back in October. You know, the first objective is to really review our progress to date, review the goals, metrics, and targets, especially in light of some of the new comprehensive plan policies. In particular, the comprehensive plan policy that updated our greenhouse gas emissions reduction target. The long-term target is now net-zero emissions by 2050. Other comprehensive plan policies related to climate resilience, building electrification, things like that, will also be inputs for the plan update. Again, building on direction from council, you know, a big focus of the plan update, we'll be looking at our work to date and identifying high-impact, cost-effective strategies to put us on the path to achieving our goals. So looking at either how we might scale up some of the work we're doing or if there's other things we should be considering, looking at the impact those could have. Again, we heard you say in October, a desire to look at lessons learned from the past four years, which Anna mentioned, which we'll be doing that as part of the update. Evaluating the actions, the council packet includes a more detailed progress report on all 78 actions in the plan. So we'll be really looking at those and thinking through what's next with some of these and also what might be missing. And then looking at, again, how we might kind of scale up some of the projects and programs that we've launched. And then I'll talk in a minute about the outreach and engagement we've been doing, but that's kind of an ongoing priority for our work to engage the community. As a kind of quick recap on the timeline, we've been working on Phase One, reviewing the goals and targets, which will continue a bit and overlap with the next phase as we start to get into looking at different actions. This work has included extensive internal and external engagement, which we'll talk about in just a minute. We've also onboarded a consultant who is providing assistance who will be with some of the outreach and engagement and also in particular with a lot of the technical analysis that will feed into the plan. As we develop the actions for the plan, we'll continue to refine the goals and targets and what we hear from our community and stakeholder feedback. And we're currently on track and planning to bring a draft plan to council in the fall. So to just highlight a bit about what we heard during the outreach process, this provides kind of a bit of an overview of all the outreach activities we've done. One of the focuses or priorities was engagement opportunities for underrepresented community members. So to that end, we partnered with two community-based organizations to broaden our outreach, working with Eastside for All and the Little Masters Club, who we've worked with closely to co-design engagement opportunities and bring in other partner organizations that they work with, which so far has been, I think, a great model for us, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with them in the next phase. We also heard a desire to make sure we're engaging youth as part of the plan update. So to do that, we've visited a number of classrooms, Bellevue School District classrooms. We've had, we had a large group of students come to City Hall a couple weeks ago from the Big Picture School, who had studied the plan pretty thoroughly and had some great insights and comments for us that Councilmember Hamilton and Lee were both here for. So that was a really nice event. And then also the Little Masters Club is a group led by students. And then also the Little Masters Club is a group of, led by students, that's also bringing in their families. So a lot of nice different touch points with youth and families throughout the process. Also done some of our other kind of more typical strategies, town hall, community workshops. We did a survey that was translated into five languages and received almost 500 responses, including about 50 in languages other than English. And then we've also been talking throughout this process to our climate advocates, who are eager for us to get moving on analyzing actions and have provided us with a list of top, I think, 12 recommended priorities that we'll be looking at closely as we move into the next phase. So again, this is kind of the first phase of outreach. We're looking forward to continuing this. Some of the key themes and what we've heard in, during our outreach processes, you know, in general, just strong support for bold climate action. Also heard a lot of residents saying, you know, they've experienced climate impacts in Bellevue. So this is something that's a little different than the last plan update where, you know, we've had the heat dome, we've had the bomb cyclone, we've had a lot of, you know, a couple summers of smoke. It's really different, I think, than what we were hearing five or six years ago when we did the outreach. So to that end, resilience has really been top of mind for folks. You know, of course, some of this outreach was at the beginning of this year, so a little closer to the bomb cyclone and some people being without power. But definitely taking that input into consideration as we, as we move forward and also really looking at what are strategies that can both help increase our resilience while also helping to reduce emissions. The community is also very interested in really high impact actions and there is a lot of interest and support in the city achieving our climate and other sustainability goals. Through some of the outreach with community based organizations, we did hear an interest in making sure a lot of the programs and strategies in this plan are available for both lower income households and also for renters. Was a big priority as part of that outreach. So to give you kind of a preview of some of the analysis, we'll be doing, this graph is just kind of for illustration purposes, but I think what we've heard a lot of is a desire to kind of better understand what do we need to do locally versus what's kind of the impact of other state or federal policies. So I wanted to try to kind of illustrate that here. And also kind of underscore for our community plan, to achieve our goals, we are reliant on the implementation of state and federal policies. So things like the Clean Energy Transformation Act, for example, which requires Washington utilities to transition to 100% renewable energy by 2045, that has a really significant impact on our emissions. But the, so as you can see here, about 65% of the emissions reductions will be driven more by state and federal policies and then 30% of our reductions are, will need to be driven by local action. So that's really kind of the focus of the plan update. What do we need to do locally? This graph is kind of another way of trying to illustrate that point. So the intent here is to show kind of what's left after all those state and federal policies are implemented. So, you know, in particular, one of the biggest impact policies is the Clean Energy Transformation Act, which requires PSC and other utilities to, like I said, transition to 100% renewable energy by 2045. So what this shows here is for 2030, the Clean Energy Transformation Act does have certain milestones for PSC to hit related to clean energy. And then we're also looking at other state policies here, such as the Climate Commitment Act, Clean Fuel Standard. So this is really kind of what's left that we need to address locally. So you can see the kind of biggest sources of emissions are fossil fuel heating in buildings and transportation emissions. So that's kind of a preview on where we'll be focusing a lot of our analysis in the next So in summary, since we presented a lot of content tonight, wanted to just kind of bring it home, just kind of highlighting some of the key points. We did hear strong community support for taking bold, bold action on emissions reduction and climate resilience. Our municipal operations, sustainability work, we're on track to meet our climate goals and have already met and exceeded the 2030 emissions reduction target, which is really great. For our citywide sustainability work, we've made progress, but there is more we need to do at the local level to achieve our, our community greenhouse gas emissions target or targets. And again, the plan update, as we move into the next phase, we'll be doing more to evaluate the effectiveness of different proposed actions to put us on the path to achieve our goals. And while we're doing the plan update, we are continuing to work on the implementation of the existing actions. So just to kind of close out the presentation, this sort of summarizes some of the key next steps. We do have a lot going on in April. April's always a busy month for us with Earth Day has turned into more of an Earth Month. So on April 19th, at the Botanical Garden, we're having our Second Annual Earth Fest, which is a nice community event, designed to kind of give residents or people who live, work, and play in Bellevue ideas for what they can do at home to reduce their environmental impact. Nice opportunities to just learn about the environment, tour the garden, that sort of thing, and then also provide input on our plan update. We're having a panel discussion on April 23rd on climate resilience with experts from the UW Climate Impacts Group and some other local experts. Back on actual Earth Day, which is April 22nd, for a council Earth Day proclamation with some of the student groups we mentioned. So that'll be nice. We have a market fair with the Little Masters Club, another engagement opportunity. And then again, working more on some of the plan update steps I mentioned earlier and aiming to come back with an update to council in July. So yeah, that pretty much wraps up our presentation again for information. Thank you for your time and we're happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to start us off and just say thank you for a great presentation. Really captured where we're doing well and where we need to focus. Really easy to understand and shows the huge impact that where PSC gets their energy, how that impacts our scores as a, as a city. I have three questions. One, do you think we will achieve our citywide goals for 2030? Why, why not? Two, well, you showed that one, so I don't have to do that. Number three, are we making recommendations for Wilburton as we start looking at land use? So when you talk about having a micro turbine, I'm so excited to hear that because there's a huge drop, vertical drop from like where Home Depot is down to where Auto Row is. And we have water transporting down that hill and it'd be incredible to harness some of that energy. So I hope that's something we're looking at.
Yeah, I can speak to those. Yeah, so I think with the 2030 goals, I would say it's still a little early to know if we're going to be able to meet them or not. I think, you know, we want to really look at more closely what do we need to do on our side to put us on the path to achieve our goals? And then, you know, we are reliant on PSC, you know, transitioning to the Clean Energy Transformation Act goal or requirement is 80% renewable energy by 2030. I think PSC has an open RFP for anyone who wants to build renewable energy in Washington State. You know, there's, it's a lot of work to get all of that renewable energy built. And so I think there is certainly a lot of effort to do it. And I think the next five years are going to be pretty critical. So it's a little hard to say now, but I think, you know, obviously something we'll continue to monitor. For Wilburton, we've done, we didn't have a chance to mention it tonight, but we did do an assessment of opportunities for having a sustainable district there. So have incorporated a number of green building incentives into the Wilburton Luca, which will be coming to council. I forget the timing.
In a couple of weeks.
In a couple of weeks, yeah. And then looking at kind of phase two, what can, transitioning into that, how can we continue to advance the idea of a sustainable district in Wilburton? The micro turbine is definitely something we can kind of look into and see what possibilities might exist there.
Anything else you can think of?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Newen House.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation tonight. As Mayor said, great update in terms of kind of where we're at right now. And some of the great accomplishments too, and I don't want those to be, to be lost tonight, because there's a lot, a lot here that we can certainly be proud of and has us on, on, on a good path in many ways. In other ways, we might miss some of the goals that, and some of them may all be ambitious, but goals that we're still trying to, trying, trying to hit. Couple of quick questions for you. In terms of the, of the tree canopy and getting that to 40%, which is fantastic, what was, what was the main driver for that? I'm sure it was, you know, multi-pronged approach of getting it back to that 40%. But what was the key driver? And then the follow up to that is, and we, you know, heard conversations about this during our all communications, right? That we are mandated by the state to increase density, the middle housing. How are we going to balance that increase of density while we're still trying to hit our, our 2030, our 2050 goals, maintain our tree canopy goal of 40%? I know we want to grow it and so do I. But, you know, this is going to have some, some real impacts on our efforts as well. So I'm kind of curious how we're going to balance that and, and, and work together in order to, you know, maintain our focus on the goals at the same time implementing those, those, those policies that will increase density throughout our city.
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll take the tree canopy one and then I think Tara can speak to the middle housing. So yeah, that's a good question around what has kind of driven that increase. I think, you know, when we do the tree canopy assessment, it is kind of a more micro assessment. But I think basically what the data is telling us is that while we may have some reductions in tree canopy or individual trees in different places, you know, the overall canopy does grow. So I think what we're seeing is that overarching growth. But I think we're, what we're also kind of hearing from the community is that, well, certain neighborhoods or streets or whatever may see a reduction in trees. And so while the, the big picture city number may show some growth, individual neighborhoods or streets or parts of the city may not, they may not be experiencing that. So I think it, you know, tells the, the overall story, but I think, you know, as we look at climate resilience, for example, and urban heat island effect, you know, there's parts of the city that have lower tree canopy. So those are great neighborhoods to look at, how we might increase tree canopy.
Okay. Yeah, I think we've seen that, right? Certain neighborhoods are well above 40% and some are below. As much as I'd like to see the overall city tree canopy increase, it would be great to focus on those, on those core areas, which are important from an equity perspective to make sure that they have that as well. But sorry, I think you were going to get on to the second part of my question.
Yes, I can address some of the second part of your question. So as the, I think as the community members spoke to some of the density increases tied to middle housing, there have been discussions with the Planning Commission. In fact, when the Tree Code was moving forward, that was a question that got raised. How are you going to balance density and tree canopy if you're updating the Tree Code now? So the intent is, once the Tree Code has been in effect for some time, maybe a couple of years, we can see what the benefits or what the results have been. And if we do need to make adjustments, there's always that opportunity for us to go back. And so that's the intent. There are also a number of other initiatives that are underway. So we're, we launched, as you may recall, the Bell Red Look Forward Land Use Code Amendment. And so through that effort, we're going to be looking at those opportunities too. Stream daylighting, how we, how we look for opportunities for park space, things like that. So all of that is a big component of the Bell Red Look Forward. And then we're also updating our critical areas ordinance. So all of that kind of dovetails with each other. And so there's our overlap and really ties in to the city's overall goal to address tree canopy.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you. And I really appreciate all the outreach, be it the youth, stakeholders, other, other groups that have a real special interest and expertise in this area as well. That's really important, I think, as we continue to work, work towards these goals. And, and just one thing, also just wanted to pass along, are, are we going to do a little bit of analysis on that tree code in terms of that coming back to the council at some point to see what's working, what's, what's not? Just to give you an example, because you brought up the bombs cyclone, I think some neighborhoods were impacted more than others. And there was a real rush afterwards, like the Bridle Trails neighborhood, for example, where I think in a natural disaster type of environment, that the Tree Code process could be expedited when you're dealing with trees that are down everywhere or close to coming down or have been severely damaged because of that storm. And don't get me wrong, these are people that want the Tree Code there, but that's a neighborhood that is heavily wooded as well. And they really wanted to take action really quickly. So I would just be interested if we could do just kind of a post incident kind of analysis of what that looks like and if we need to make any, any tweaks in that Tree Code for that hopefully rare bomb cyclone that we won't see too many times in the, in the future. So I just wanted to mention that as well. But thanks again for the great report tonight.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. As you mentioned, we had students from the Big Picture School here. And one of the things that I said to them was to do what you can do now, now. And I think the city has done a great job of acting on the things we can. Like our staff has thoroughly reviewed our municipal operations. Those are the things that we directly control and have successfully taken actions to reduce the city's impact on our climate. Significant progress on 90% of our municipal actions, takes planning, dedication, and hard work to accomplish. Just want to commend the staff for really knocking that out of the park. So well done. And while none of us wants to hear that we are not on track to meet our greenhouse gas reduction goals, if we don't clearly know where we are, we can't make the necessary adjustments to get on track or if necessary, to reset our goals and redouble our efforts. The update to the Sustainable Bellevue Plan coming out later this year will help us clearly understand where we are now and where we need to invest to achieve our sustainability goals. I think we're all anxious to engage in the update process, so we're able to refocus our attention on strategies that help us better achieve our sustainability goals. I agree with Councilmember Newen House that I think the outreach has been really solid, seems very sound. And I know that some of the comments that have been made regarding some of that feedback, such as a desire for continued strong action on sustainability and climate, clearer presentation of the city's sustainability goals, and support for an increased emphasis on climate resilience. Those are all certainly the kinds of feedback that I would give. Also, you know, we know we're coming out of a flat budget year. I'm certainly looking forward to getting our financial update later this summer and having the chance to consider what's possible as we go into our mid by budget process. I don't think anyone's feeling especially optimistic that we'll be in a position to make changes to our current budget, but hopefully we will be able to. And I would be curious to know, you mentioned in the presentation that we need to take more local action to reach our greenhouse goal reductions. And I'm just curious, you know, what might be possible in the mid by and what might be possible in the next budget? What would you look at to make the biggest impact on achieving our greenhouse gas emissions reductions? Where do we spend our money first?
So I think that's something staff is already starting to think about. Jennifer mentioned the consultants that we've just onboarded and have just started work. They're really going to be providing a detailed analysis. So when we come back to you, either at your July meeting or further down the line, we'll be able to provide you with more information based on their analysis. So they're going to be looking at our existing actions, assess what the economic impacts are, see what new actions we could incorporate, or maybe there are existing actions we could make changes to. And so we'll be able to get a really good feel for that and be able to make those recommendations to council and provide you with kind of some options then. and provide you with kind of some options then. That could tie into conversations for our future budget, budget implications.
Okay, so you think we'll hear that this summer then?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, all right. And then too, I did want to just follow up on a question that the mayor had. And I know that it's hard to always be able to assess if we're on track to meet our targets or not. But I would like to just, when we have these regular updates, for you to just give us your best assessment in the moment as to whether we are or not. Because I think if we regularly just say we're not sure, which I, I believe is the case, we can't be completely sure. But I think if you have enough information to be fifty-five percent sure, I would like you to share that with us so that, you know, we can react to that. We can take the appropriate action. And this is all the kind of work that builds over time. So when you come back on a regular basis, you give us what's current. If we're not on track, I think that's helpful. If we are on track, I think that's something to celebrate. But I just, I would like to have your best answer. And so, and I think in the absence of yes, I just am going to assume no. But I don't want to do that if, if that's not necessary. So I would just like to ask that in the future that we just hear that. Appreciate the presentation, appreciate all the hard work. And I think the city and staff has done a remarkable job in doing what we can do now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. It's really good to see where we are. And it reminded me of probably five years ago when we were struggling to get a hold of this and everything. And staff has really done a great job over time to, it helped, of course, in adding more people and everything. But it is, it's really exciting to see how much gains we've made and all that. I have some questions just on, and I appreciate all the comments so far. With the, with the rapid growth and change and everything we have in Bellevue, I wonder, you know, we, we, we have plans of what we're doing now with, with equipment and everything else. Are we taking into account or looking at future actions to add to current actions? And what do we do? We can't, you know, something we did two years ago maybe can be enhanced or something like that. So one of my questions is, how can the impact of new steps and strategies be accelerated and woven into current plans? And, and are, what do, do you have a program that kind of looks at that? How do you, how do you keep up with things that are new coming in? And because, you know, it's really hard to get everything you're working on, you've got plans going and everything else. And it's hard to have enough staff then to come in and say, okay, some new stuff has come in. But is that a part of your planning? And I would think it'd be a good thing for us to look at. And we may need to help you in terms of little resources, but how does that kind of fit into what you're doing?
Yeah, I guess there's kind of different ways we can address that. Kind of from both a project planning standpoint and then also kind of, I'm thinking more capital projects, if you want to speak to that. From, I think we're often looking for opportunities for, if we're going to work on a certain project and maybe another department is working on something adjacent, you know, are those projects we can, you know, there's maybe a way to merge them together or embed a certain sustainability element into a certain project. I think the Wilburton work is a nice example where we were doing the, you know, sub-area plan update and then Lucca, and then had a goal in the Sustainable Bellevue Plan to look at where there might be an opportunity for a sustainable district. And then Wilburton kind of emerged as the sort of neighborhood with the most potential for that, just given, you know, some of the potential for district energy and other things. So that, I think, was a really nice example where we kind of married up two projects and moved that forward. I think on the, you know, with some of our capital projects as well, maybe if you want to talk about Envision or some of the other thinking with that.
Yeah, thank you. So one way that we can scale up our projects and sustainability across the board, across departments, was sustainability training where we certified forty staff members, engineers, project managers in every department, and trained them on different criteria for how to make projects more sustainable in general. So that there's more advocates in every department on different projects, bringing different expertise to the table, and kind of figuring out what best practices we can scale up and make business as usual. So that's one way to do it, is internally changing the culture and fostering that culture of sustainability decision-making processes. And then another way that we do it is just collaboration. We look at existing planned projects where there's opportunities for sustainability improvements and outcomes. And then just try to be strategic in our decision-making processes so that we can hit two birds with one stone when we're looking at different projects. So I would say one is just training our staff so it's not just our sustainability team working on these things. We try, we want everyone in all of our departments to recognize that they're actually already doing a lot of great work around sustainability. And that's kind of built into their work already and that there might be some opportunities to amplify that. And we're continuing that education program by hosting quarterly peer learning meetings. City Renton just recently did a sustainable infrastructure project, so they're presenting on their projects and lessons learned. So we're trying to foster that culture of sustainability across departments.
Yeah, and I appreciate, actually you answered before I gave you the question on the second one, kind of on something. I was thinking, how, how can we work with the districts such as Wilburton that are engaged in upgrading and new usages and changes in the properties? And how can we work to increase positive plans and ways to do sustainability? And, and I, I think working on these sometimes would give us an opportunity to find out and do new things and all. What I, I guess I'm, it sounds like your, your work on this, because sometimes you just, you have a plan and, and you say, we're going to do these things, and you're still doing them three years from then without any changes. And I think with Wilburton, you have a great opportunity to really look at that and, and maybe get some different things and all. But it's also an, an area that, that we can get really great gains in sustainability because we have the chance to redo things and things are being built differently and all the changes and growth and everything. So, I mean, I'm really, I was pleased to hear that. And I think overall, the work and the way you set this up is, is really positive to, to make this go. And it's really exciting going back, you know, several years ago when we were struggling, how do we get a hold of this? And I just want to compliment the staff very, very much on the way you have done that and worked with us on, on that. So I think we're in, we're in good shape. And I appreciate the coming to us and talking about how you're doing this and giving us the information. So we, we feel confident that we have a good plan. You're, you're doing great work. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you guys have a tough job. I just wanted to stop saying that human beings have been working with nature for, forever. And so there's a wise saying, say, don't mess with nature. But we are messing with nature. And, but we have to, unfortunately, because that's the human nature that we change, we have needs, we want. And, you know, our lifestyle, everything affects, you know, how we want to live. And that's messing up with nature. It's inevitable, I guess, right? But we need to make it the way that would be least intrusive and most compatible. But it depends, again, with each community, each culture, each people, how do we do it? We use a lot of nice words, sustainable. What does that mean? So I think the thing we do is, we've been working hard. We want to get results. The only time, only thing we know, whether it's workable, whether it fits our community, whether, whether we actually can be compatible with nature that fits us as well, is to do something, do the things that we believe, to the best of our knowledge, our feeling, that it's compatible. We have the least interference on nature. But we don't know whether we do, whether we do is doing that. So I think that's why we need to have results. And we need to do the best we can to focus on something, okay? We believe that's important for Bellevue, for our community, for our region. And then work on it, put our resource on it, honestly, do whatever we can and see what the results prove to be. Whether we say, hey, this works, we're satisfied. Or it doesn't, then we better do something different. It's hard because that means you have to have constant interaction with folks. And you got to be able to measure correctly. And with so many things, we are, we are, we are talking about using best practices, other people examples. All these are results we need to be testing, working on. So it's hard, right? You have to see what they do and see if it's comparable to us. And then how do we feel, whether it's compatible for us? But I think we have so many things to do, so it'll be very difficult. A number of years ago, we, we don't have many people working on that. People, we heard asking us, we want more resources to work on that, which we have done, you know? So if we have resources, but we don't know what to do, right? Don't, don't, don't measure the results. It doesn't matter because we, we're just blindly going all over the place. It's not going to make anything happen. But now I think we have, get more people on, we can focus on some things, really work on it and getting results. But I believe that the best way to do is not to scatter all over the place, but focus on a few things that people are talking about. We are hearing about Vision Zero, you know? Some of them, you know, even, even that, it may have, whatever we want to do, it will somehow create conflict with others. But we have to focus on it and work on those things and see whether the results prove to be that is the way we want to go further and that becomes sustainable. Still, we don't know it's sustainable, but at least that's the right step to go forward. That would actually give us result to, to us. That would be more satisfying rather than just, you know, shooting at the blind. And maybe it works, maybe it won't. So I would recommend picking a few issues. Well, when we hear from the public, whether it be tree canopy, you know, we look at trees. We have a lot of green in Bellevue, but at the same time, we have a lot of bare places. When we develop a, a housing project, whatever that may be, if, you know, just give an example, we lose a lot of trees. But there are places we don't do anything, maybe we're not, nobody's going to want to live there. We have lots of trees. How do we balance that, right? We don't have the places that's a lot of trees, a lot of places no trees. We have to balance it. So I think that's how we want to do is pick a project, work on it, get some results. This works, people are happy with it, let's use that as a model, let's do more. And then maybe pick up something else, then we can, if we need resources, that's our commitment we have to make, the city council has to make, the people have to make, we'll put people on it, we'll do it. That's the best thing I can do. Otherwise, you're going to be struggling, frustrated. You'll be, I don't know, we're going to continue to have this kind of discussion. So I hope, good luck to you, and we will support you. If you do something specific, get some results, look at it, share with the public, and let's see how that works. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Suma Nwiria.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for grace, this is my first time coming. But two things I just want to point out very, I think is very admirable. This first presentation we're looking at is very clear. And then the wording removes a lot of language barrier for people who's not, maybe English is not the first language, and thank you for that. So everybody who's looking at it can understand. And then the second thing is, I think it's really amazing that I engaged the kids. I would say, you know, one of my kids actually go to Big Picture, so they are really proud to be part of this whole engagement with the city. And also the fact they look at the presentation, I'm pretty sure they were able to understand it. That's very special. And then there's no like, like language jargon that I don't understand that some, you know, people in the audience cannot stand. So this is really good job on the presentation. I just have one little question. I was wondering, how do we engage differently to the vulnerable group, like the frontline community, about disturbing the family, adding the language assessment?
Yeah, I think our approach for trying to engage more frontline communities is really in partnership with the community-based organizations. And I think we've been trying to, you know, really work with them to understand and to have them kind of advise us on how best to do that. And then we also have a few, what we call cultural outreach assistants, so part-time employees with the city. Many of them have other jobs in, in the city of Bellevue. So they are native speakers in, you know, a number of different other, a number of languages other than English. And so they've also been great conduits to different diverse communities in Bellevue.
Thank you.
So I see we have Matt Larson from PSC here, and we were referencing PSC's goals to have clean energy by a certain time. Do you want, Matt, do you want to bring us up to speed on where PSC is on that? Is that okay if I invite him?
We hadn't planned on having Mr. Larson speak to this, but maybe a few words and then we can follow up with more information.
I'll keep it very brief since we've taken a lot of time with the topic. I'll just say, I did send the council a PowerPoint since our conversation this morning, Mayor, when we saw you. Just quick, kind of put together a real short, short PowerPoint presentation, assuming maybe some questions were tossed my way. So I, I won't go through that for, for the sake of time now. Other than, all of you should have a copy of that, and I provided it to some of the staff too. But in, in a nutshell, it just gives you a, an idea of kind of where PSC's progress is right now. The CETA required that we were approaching sixty percent of clean energy by 2030 and a hundred percent by 2045, as the staff mentioned. And right now, we're about fifty-two percent. Hydro is about thirty, thirty percent. We have heavy investments in wind turbine projects that are now twenty-two percent of our energy portfolio. And you can see a, a graphic that shows you all the, all the different, about three point eight, or three thousand eight hundred megawatts, three point eight gigawatts. A megawatt can serve about two hundred to a thousand homes. And so just to put that in perspective, we, we brought enough megawatts for three thousand eight hundred since 2019 with the passage of CETA to serve, to put, of, of clean energy, of wind turbine and solar. And you'll see a couple coming online in the next couple of years of battery, like battery and energy storage systems, which when we, the Achilles' heels of, of wind and solar is their intermittent power sources. And so we need strategies like battery energy storage systems, particularly long-duration ones. Lithium-ion kind of rules the battery area right now, but they only have about a four or five hour duration. So it's a very proven technology. There are ones like iron-air batteries that have up to a hundred hour duration, but they need to be proven out at scale. And so it's going to take several years. Same with SMRs. Many of you had, were engaged in conversations with, for example, Terra Power. That's a Bellevue headquartered at Bill Gates Company on small modular reactors. A lot of exciting things happen in that arena. But unfortunately, some of those technologies like Bill Gates isn't arriving until 2030, where we need this, we, we need it now to bring those twenty-four seven on-demand based with energy sources in there. So anyway, I'll, I'll stop there. That's kind of a quick little high-level overview. But again, there's more detail, and I'm really happy if any one of you want to reach out to me and ask more questions or get more details to do that.
And can the public reach out to you as well and get more information?
Sure, yeah.
How would they do that, Matt?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not as much of a liaison to the public, I would have to refer to similar other, other PSC folks. But, yeah, just, just send them my, if you have some, the public making an inquiry, send them my way and I'll get them to the right folks, or if, if I can't answer the questions directly for them.
Okay, so if the public wants to hear more from PSC, they should ask us first, and then we can direct them to you.
Yeah, usually you would get that, that question.
Okay.
Anytime you, any of you get a question, shoot it to me if you want, if you have someone.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, yes.
Follow on that, just one quick point.
That's a focus. We, many years ago, we did the power-up heat pump, we did a solar panel. These are the focus things, see? That's right, pointing to what PSC is doing. If they're doing efficient energy, that's what we need to focus on and work on that, and that would make a difference. Thank you. This is example. Otherwise, we do heat pump. Five years later, forget it. Solar panel, no focus. Now we got some focus.
Yeah, I'll, I'll quickly add, Councilmember Lee, that some of the subject matter experts working on what we call TENS or thermal energy networks have kind of gotten wind of, you know, like the Wilburton is a possible project for looking at how do you use the waste energy from one business to, to, you know, provide energy for another. And so I already talked to Emile about that this past week, and we're, we're going to get them connected with Jennifer. They'll be reaching out to if they haven't already, Jennifer, and start engaging some conversations on. We have folks excited about engaging in that conversation with the Bellevue staff on, on some of those possibilities.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you for the presentation. I think we'll take a ten- I think we'll take a 10-minute break and resume at 20 till.
Thank you.
We're gonna resume with our second study session item. City manager, do you introduce this one for us, please?
So for this study session, we're establishing Transportation Department is here to give you a report on road safety data and trends and some of the safe system activities that the Transportation Department has been working on in support of the council's Vision Zero goal. And so we have Chris Long, our Assistant Director of Mobility Operations, Franz Loinhurst, Mobility Planning and Solutions Manager, and Daniel Lai, our Smart Mobility Manager. And with that, I will hand it over to Chris.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. And thank you, Mayor Robinson and council for having us here tonight. So we're excited to be here to share the, the great work that our staff has been doing to advance Vision Zero here in the city. The, as a reminder, tonight is a information-only presentation and we do look forward to your thoughts and comments as we wrap this up. So we have a packed agenda for this meeting. We are gonna kick this off by looking at some of the trends that have transpired over the last year and over the last 10 years. And then I'll pass it off to Franz and, and Daniel, who'll go over what we accomplished in 2024 and what we're looking to do in 2025. And then Franz will wrap it up with a summary of the outreach that we're gonna be doing on some of our Vision Zero initiatives in 2025. So unfortunately, the numbers in the news that we're presenting to start here is not great. As you can see in this graphic, 2024 was our largest number of fatal and serious injury collisions in the last 10 years. We had two fatalities last year in 34 serious injury crashes. This also represents a significant increase in crashes that have involved our most vulnerable road users, which are those that bike, walk, and roll through the city. Over this 10-year period, we've had 232 people who were seriously injured and 22 fatalities on our streets of Bellevue. And this equates to about one serious injury or fatal collision in Bellevue every 14 days. When you take these numbers and look, look at them in perspective based on a population across the state, you'll see that we've, we are showing here what the, what the state trends are and then the top five cities, not including Bellevue. And our numbers are trending up, but at a much lower rate than the top five Washington cities and the state of Washington. But we recognize that these trends are not acceptable because these numbers represent real people. These are our neighbors, our friends, our coworkers, our family. And we know we need, that there, we need to continue working to, to see this trend reverse. So we've spent a significant amount of time digging into data and our staff is helping us look at ways that we can specifically address the trends that we're seeing. As an example, from 2015 to 2024, 65% of all fatal and serious injury crashes involve pedestrians, involving pedestrians occurred at traffic signals. And Daniel is going to talk to us today about some of the focus work that they've been doing to, to address pedestrian safety at signalized intersections. Vehicle speed is also one of the top contributing factors to crashes, serious injury and fatal crashes in Bellevue. And Franz will speak to what we are doing to address speeds this year in particular. So with that, I will pass it on to Franz.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, Mayor, council members. In 2020, council adopted the safe system approach to its Vision Zero goal of eliminating the number, eliminating traffic fatalities and serious injuries on city streets by 2030. And following council's adoption of that approach, the city manager approved Bellevue's Vision Zero strategic plan, which establishes our cross-departmental one-city initiative. And to maintain momentum on this, on this process that we're on, staff develops and the Vision Zero steering team comprised of our department heads approves an annual action plan. So tonight, so tonight, we're going to start off with a review of some highlights from our 2024 Vision Zero Action Plan, some of the accomplishments. And for a full detailed list of those activities accomplished in '24, we've published our progress report that's on our Vision Zero webpage. So some notable accomplishments. Last year, we prioritized securing $15.7 million in combined federal and state funds. This includes $1.4 million in strengthening mobility and revolutionizing transportation or smart funds that Daniel will speak to in a moment. And this is additive to the fiscal year '23 grant awards, notably the $2.7 million in Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A funds that I'll speak to as well. Additionally, council passed policies that improve public safety, notably 20 mile-per-hour speed limits on local streets. And council also approved new funding, increasing the budget for the Rapid Build Program, as well as new funding for safe routes to school and the arterial sidewalk program. A big emphasis for us is building physical infrastructure. And last year, we implemented more than 3.5 miles of pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure citywide. The map on the left reflects all of the different kinds of projects that have come online last year. We also implemented a combined more than 55 road safety projects and signal operation changes that include rectangular rapid flashing beacons, radar feedback signs, leading pedestrian intervals, no-rite turn-on-red restrictions and others. And lastly, we also made significant progress accomplishing the candidate improvements identified in our road safety audit work over the past couple of years. And with that, I'll hand the presentation over to my colleague, Daniel Lai, Smart Mobility Manager, to speak to the digital infrastructure improvements made last year.
Great, thank you, Franz. Good evening, Mayor and council members. As Franz mentioned, we invested a lot of time and energy in physical infrastructure, but we complement that with our digital infrastructure as well. That means leveraging the best of all the different technologies that are out there, harnessing the partnerships that we have with our local private sector partners in Bellevue as well, really bringing that to the forefront at our city and at our intersections and our connected network in the city. The first project we wanna highlight here is how we tested LiDAR technology last year at signalized intersections. And LiDAR is very unique for us because it allows us to be able to sense each and every pedestrian, cyclist, anybody that's crossing the roadway and be able to see that interaction with other modes at the intersection as well. And with that project, we were able to partner with Amazon Web Services and ultimately improved crosswalk safety and informed our approach for our SMART grant, which I'll talk a little bit more about as well. Second project here to highlight is our Connected Vehicle Project that we partnered with T-Mobile on, where we deployed connected technology at 47 intersections in Bellev, or 47 locations in Bellevue that includes slow-speed zones, school zones, pedestrian crossings, so that whenever these devices are activated beyond the line of sight, we're able to communicate a safety message to the vehicles surrounding in the area so that they don't have to rely on the physical infrastructure only, but be complemented by the digital warnings that are sent to them as well. And lastly, we are, we also launched a new next-generation transit signal priority project in Bellevue in partnership with King County Metro that allows us to provide buses in Bellevue and bus rapid transit with priority treatment through Bellevue intersections. This is really unique for us because it's a software-based approach, doesn't rely on any hardware. That really allows us to scale that across all the intersections in Bellevue now, potentially, really unleashing real new capabilities for us that haven't ever been presented in the past before. All of this leads us to our SMART grant as well, which is what you're seeing as the image on the left here, which is our project called the Real-Time Traffic Signal Safety Interventions Project. This project is all about improving intersection safety at signalized intersections, using sensors to inform real-time actions that would intervene to grant pedestrians or cyclists more time based on what it, based on what is sensed and based on the prevailing conditions there. The next slide here gives you a sense of how it all works. Let's see if this video plays. Oh, the video won't play here, but we'll describe what happens in this video here. The right side, what you hear is a LiDAR image that shows all the different modes and all the users at Bellevue Way and Northeast Eighth, one of our busier intersections in the city. When the system is turned on and activated, it can sense each and every pedestrian in the crossing, actively crossing. It can also sense speed of crossing and speed of every single user on the roadway. What we can then do with that is we can start to sense slow-walking pedestrians. How many pedestrians? So if there's a crush threshold that has exceeded, we might intervene in real time and grant more time before we start counting down the signal for the pedestrians. The other operations that we're exploring right now is that if we see slow-walking pedestrians at the onset of the walk phase, we can preemptively already extend that phase to grant more time. Also, if we sense that somebody has fallen or if some, or if there's a lot of pedestrians crossing the crosswalk, we can also implement those triggers as well. So this is funded through our $1.4 million of federal funds under the SMART program now. It will deploy and prototype this technology at five additional intersections in the city. There will be a stage two of this grant that will potentially allow us to scale up citywide as well. And the last pilot that we accomplished in 2024 was all about driver alerts, as well as a partnership with our neighborhood partner, T-Mobile here in Bellevue, where we were able to deploy roadside radios, also leverage their network to be able to push messages out and really communicate these critical safety, life safety messages between vehicle and pedestrians, vehicle to vehicle, vehicle infrastructure as well. And then ultimately leveraging their network to be able to send these messages out. So not only are we allowed, are we able to do this at the intersection, it also gives us the capability to communicate these messages between the intersections as well, areas where we don't typically have a lot of connectivity in the city, which is why the network solution is really primed to delivering these critical messages as well. And with that, I'll turn it back to Franz to talk about our 2025 activities.
Thank you, Daniel. So our 2025 Vision Zero Action Plan includes 41 tasks. And today, we're gonna limit our presentation to those that involve our federal and state grant funds. So Daniel already spoke to some of the SMART-related work that, that we're advancing together. In addition to that, there are two demonstration pilots associated with SS4A that are also advancing and testing signal technology for real-time safety interventions. Secondly, and I'll speak to this more in the next slide, we are using SS4A funding assessing our existing automated speed enforcement program and determining potential expansion opportunities. Also, using SS4A funds, we will be, we are presently evaluating 30-plus mile per hour arterial roadways to determine recommended target speeds. And you'll be receiving a study session on that in May. And lastly, we're advancing two road safety audits in May and June that we're using SS4A funds for, that include video analytics data collection that we're using WSDOT grant funds. So, so now I'll delve into one of these activities just to provide a little bit more information about where we're at and what's upcoming. Automated Speed Enforcement. The city of Bellevue piloted this approach using school zone speed safety cameras in 2009 with two camera locations. Following an evaluative period and a determination of its efficacy, there was a third camera deployed in 2014. And the program has not changed since that time. This past year, the Washington State Legislature passed automated speed enforcement legislation that provides opportunities to update, update local programs. This includes expanding enforcement locations. Previously, this was limited to school zones. Now, the RCW allows for deployment at public park areas, hospital areas, as well as along corridors where there's a high incidence of speeding-related crashes. And on that particular line item, cities are allowed to deploy one camera per 10,000 population, just for that one category. So that's, that's one facet of the change. Secondly, the RCW has broadened the authority to administer the infractions. Previously, this was limited to law enforcement officers. Now, police support officers and Transportation Department staff are eligible to administer these infractions, to review and confirm the infractions. And then third, anytime a new camera is considered for deployment, a city is required under the RCW to conduct an equity and needs assessment that considers vulnerable road users, speeding and crash data. So where we're at right now, using SS4A funds, is working cross-departmentally with police department and others in evaluating program expansion opportunities that are in alignment with the RCW, taking into account community input and data analysis. Of course, any programmatic change to the program would require, and any new camera locations considered and any vendor contract requirements thereof would require future council action. So this next and final slide is about upcoming community outreach activities now through June. And what we wanna emphasize is that we wanna make sure that the community is brought along for this discussion so that their priorities are accounted for in these projects. So now, through May, we're, we're working with the Transportation Commission on the microability code change. We have three activities that will commence in May. The first of a series of road safety audits, the first one on Bell Red Road, that'll provide both in-person and online community participation opportunities. In May, staff will join you for a study session on arterial speed management. And at that same time, staff will launch a combined Safe Speed webpage that provides information, both on the arterial speed management work as well as the automated enforcement activities. Pivoting to June, there are three activities that will get underway. The second road safety audit, same kind of engagement opportunities there. And a Safe Streets corridor study on 164th that will provide the public opportunities to provide input on concepts. And lastly, continuing to work on that, those, that Safe Speeds combined effort, this time going out in the community with tabling events. Again, the takeaway here is we wanna make sure that the community is well-involved in all of these projects. And with that, we welcome any questions you might have.
Okay, great, thank you. Can you go back to slide eight, please? Or seven? Or six? Five? There you go. Is it this one? Yeah, this is it. That's horrifying. When I think about all the energy and effort that we have all put into trying to make our, our city safer for all types of transportation, looking at this is just horrifying. And it doesn't matter to me how it compares to other cities. We don't want this in our city. And I, I know you feel the same. You told me earlier that 65% of pedestrian injuries and deaths occur at intersections. And it seems like we're doing a real focused effort on addressing that, which I appreciate. But it's curious to me, we had a really good little presentation here from our community that outlines all the different projects that different cities are doing, Bellevue, Redmond, Seattle. And it does show that Redmond and Seattle are doing more than we are in terms of the projects addressing pedestrian and bike safety. What, what this graph indicates to me is What, what this graph indicates to me is that we have increasing population of ped bikes, and we're not somehow providing them with safe routes. It's just, you know, we're trying, but it's not happening. And so I'm wondering, how does our fatal and serious injury crashes in Bellevue compare to Redmond, Seattle? You said top five Washington cities, and I don't know what those are. So can you tease out Redmond and Seattle and tell me, those are cities that are doing a little bit more than we are? Are they having more success than we are in having lower crash, serious crash and death rates?
We don't have, so Seattle is included in the top five cities, I believe that's Seattle, Tacoma, Vancouver, Spokane, and Kent? Is that, what's the, anyway, but it's not Redmond. So the, the one, one thing to note with the, the data that was provided in that is that it is, it was looking at our 2025 Vision Zero Action Plan. This is the fifth action plan that we've done, so we've built upon that, and that's just what we're focusing on this year. It doesn't mean we're not, we've done a lot of the same things that, that those other agencies are doing. So, but when it comes to bike and ped, you know, we, we, we built a lot of infrastructure, especially when we started the, the levy, but that was picking off a lot of the easy projects, and now we've gotten to the hard ones. Yeah, they, they are requiring a lot more investment in order to build separated facilities that, that are requiring rebuilding sidewalks and rebuilding portions of road. There's very little infrastructure left where we can just narrow traffic lanes in order to squeeze in a buffered bike lane. So that's, that's one of the big issues that we're facing in order to expand that. And of course, sidewalk, we, we continue to do our best. We have, you know, we did add in this last budget, the arterial sidewalk program. We hope to see that flourish in, in future years, but that's an area that it's, it is, it's very expensive to build. And so we're, we're going to continue to tackle that and, and do what we can. But, you know, a lot of the projects that we're doing in here are to also focus on those systemic issues like safety at intersections and speed.
Well, I'm feeling a sense of urgency, and I, I feel like if we're going to be serious about creating safe routes for ped bikes, we just really need to be honest about what, what do we have to do? It might be really expensive, it might be really hard, but if that's our goal, if that truly is our goal, and, and we're kind of like, we got one foot in the boat, one foot on the dock, we need to make a commitment here and do the hard work. So I would like to see if we can do a comparison at least to Redmond and just see how their fatal and serious injury crashes rates look compared to ours, if there's anything we can learn from that, and maybe they can learn something from us, I don't know. But thank you, I, I appreciate this, but I'm eager to change this trend. Let's see, Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, great presentation, really love the update, and especially appreciate all the, both the physical and the digital infrastructure, that's outstanding there as we focus on, on those two areas. And remember, part of that, I think, part of that 5G presentation at T-Mobile that you gave as well, how this is really making a difference at our intersections and being able to, to, to track how pedestrians are coming across the street. And you gave a couple of different scenarios there. I'm, I'm wondering also, can we preload, like if we're having a July 4th or snowflake lane, do we automatically put in there that'll be bigger crowds already, so we need to give everyone longer times to get across? Do we do that already?
We already do that, yeah.
Perfect, great, great. And then you mentioned that we have 41 different activities, and you mentioned a couple there. But I'm, I'm just curious, and, and this kind of goes to what, what, what the, what the mayor was saying, would love to just kind of expedite or get started even more. It sounds like we've done, you know, a lot of the, the low-hanging fruit, so it's coming up to these, to these bigger projects, but these are important projects. So I would just love the next time we have an update on Vision Zero, if you could outline those bigger projects, the costs associated with those projects, and then what the timeline is to get those, those projects done, as well as those, those priorities, in, in, in terms of which ones come first, where are the fatalities and the serious injuries happening, which intersections do we need to address first, et cetera, et cetera. I would just like that overview to have a better sense of, of which priorities we need to tackle first and how we fund that to move forward with this, because we're, and I totally get it, but we're, we're not talking specifics, and I'd really like to talk specifics and really understand the budgets as we move forward in order to, in order to fund this, because we need to get it done. There, there, there's no doubt about it, we need, we need to get it done. Also, another question for you on the, on the, on the speed reduction. I know that overall, that will, at least the studies that I've seen, it will overall decrease the speed. However, you know, decrease in a 20 or in 30 in, in, in some areas, is, are there any other design principles that we can implement to ensure that speed is actually reduced? You know, so, so many of the, of the accidents that I'm familiar with, unfortunately, like you said, the speed always plays a huge, I don't know, factor in, 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 but if someone's determined to speed that day, or at that time of day, there's very little we can, we can do about that. So are, are we, I guess my question is, are we putting too much emphasis on, on, on reducing those, those speeds, while it might make it, you know, I guess slower, but will it actually accomplish the goal of reducing the fatal and serious injuries?
It's a great question, and you're, you're foreshadowing into our presentation when we're back here in May. So it's, it, it, we are, so in, last year, we completed a, what we called our, our speed management plan, which looked at speed mitigations that can be done on arterials is one of the major takeaways in that, and looking at new ways that we can influence speed beyond just changing the, the speed limit.
Yeah.
We, one of our, a big project that we're doing right now, that, that it was the, I believe the construction contract was approved a couple of months ago, is on Coal Creek Parkway, where we're doing a different style of information, or speed feedback signs on that corridor, also doing more warning and curb warning signs there. But as we, and we, and what you'll hear in the presentation in May is that there are other corridors that we want to launch speed reductions on early in the project to start looking at different metrics on those and seeing how increasing the number of signs influences, that there's been studies done around the country that, that have shown that just the signage alone can help reduce speed. But then there are other metric, other things we can look at, like more raised intersections or raised crosswalks. You know, we have to work with our partners in fire to make sure that we are accounting for their priority response routes when doing things like that. But it is, there are a number of other tools in the toolbox that we're looking to, to use, and, you know, the, but the, the initial effort in trying to build a culture of reducing speeds, if everybody else on the road is going slow, it's hard for people to speed. So, you know, we're, we're hoping that, that Bellevue residents will understand that we're doing this for them.
Yeah, under 100%. Well, thank you for that answer, and again, I'd be very, you know, very interested to see the prioritized projects, cost associated with it, timeline, so we have an understanding of that, and we can help push this forward as quickly as possible. So thank you.
Councilmembers, Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you also for calling on me right after you, and Councilmember Newenhouse, because everything the mayor said, and Councilmember Newenhouse said completely agree with that. You know, we talk about public safety all the time, and we know how important it is to the community that we not only feel safe, but that we are indeed safe. And of course, public safety is about more than our wonderful first responders. You mentioned some really alarming statistics about 2024, two fatalities, 34 serious injuries. That's really rough, and I, I appreciate that that stands out to you as much as it does to, I think, the whole community. And, you know, even, you know, as unfortunate as it is, it's not for a lack of caring or trying. I know that safety is a huge priority for the city, and your presentation made that very clear. One of the things that I do on behalf of the city is represent us at the Transportation Policy Board for the Pugetts on Regional Council, and it's given me a firsthand look at how the city staff works to secure funding for and emphasize the importance of road safety. And you mentioned some of the impactful steps that you took in 2024, so I think the sidewalks and the bike facilities, that's really great, and so very important, but I think as I'm hearing from my colleagues so far, we need to do more. And I think 2025 is off to a good start, really interested to see the evaluation of arterial speeds that's coming, and then the road safety assessment of our high-injury network. And then you had a really good slide here, slide 14, about the other community outreach activities that are coming. I think that the, we're really going to learn a lot and get a lot of engagement from the community, so also looking for that, looking forward to that, I should say. And obviously, too, I think we all support Vision Zero goals and zero traffic deaths in the city by 2030. Just wanted to, again, kind of highlight what the mayor talked about as far as our bike ped facilities. They're, they're not cheap, but I think we do need to take a look at them and, and look at how we're going to invest in those. I think especially with an east-west bike facility, would really like to see us focused on that. In the previous presentation, I had kind of a similar question that I have for you. You know, we're doing our financial analysis, I think we're always doing it, but we have a big one coming this summer, we're looking to the mid-buy, and I think it's not too early to look at the next budget. And I'm just wondering, you know, if we come up with a little extra money at the mid-buy, and as we look to the next budget, are there a couple of things that you think would be the most impactful in improving our roadway safety?
Many of our programs have long backlogs of projects, so we'd be going back and looking at the, kind of the prioritized lists that we have there. Some of the systemic improvements that we're doing citywide are like our crosswalk enhancements, so we're replacing all of our old parallel bar-style crosswalks with continental style, which is what you'll see just outside City Hall here at, at some of these intersections. We have some funding that is improving that, we've, I don't have the numbers at my fingertips, but we've-
1 million from Highway Safety Improvement Program funding to-
That's right.
Do the high-visibility crosswalks.
Yeah, we have, we got two grants from the Highway Safety Improvement Program from the state this year, and one of them is to do more crosswalks. So there's programs like that, that we can certainly leverage quickly. And then the, the list of enhanced crosswalks, other, like doing the, the rapid flashing beacons and so forth, there's a number of those that we can, we have lined up as well.
Great. Super important work, you're doing a great job, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Good conversation so far, and I think there, we all have concerns on this, and what's so different from most anything else we do, this, this is something that has, you know, life and death, and injuries and all, and that's, that's, and, you know, you talked about where the funding, we're behind in that. I mean, that's part of the problem, the whole thing. But the other thing I thought was interesting is that these injury clashes here is the Washington State and the top five Washington cities all has kind of the same way to be, you know, how it's working, they go along here the same. We, we have these pieces where we go up and down and around, and now we're going up, and it looks like maybe if it keeps going, we might cross or hit what the Washington five cities are doing. So it looks good, but it has some, I think, some, some, you know, gongs saying, wait a minute, we need to, there are things we need to do, because the future, and, and we're getting bigger, so it's, and, and I think that's going to have a big effect on us, as you know that. But, so, I think what I'd recommend, what I'd like to see is us really working on this, and, and we, we're not having much time right now to talk about this, but what can we do and what are we doing to make the differences? We've got some stuff in putting in place, and I don't know, hopefully 25 and going down to 20 is, you need to get a bump, it's not quite as hard, but, and, and, but the other thing that is interesting in looking out and being around, looking at the roads going up 112th and 116th and all that, I mean, the drivers out there, and particularly in the freeways and everything, they're driving fast. And even on, just coming up one street here on Main Street, I mean, I hear cars coming and, and they really roar going up, and they're doing probably 40, 50 miles an hour. So, and, and I guess, and we're, and we're growing so fast, I think that's one thing, you know, we're dealing with. So there are a lot of challenges, and part of the problem is, is the funding, and that's always the thing that kind of keeps things from getting better, but, you know, I appreciate what you're working on, it's just that you have, for all of us, and, and you're, you're leading the working on this, is that this is a real issue, and it could, could get a lot worse. I think there are, there just are, seem to be, if you're downtown for a long time, and even being in the neighborhoods, you've, people are driving a lot faster than they did five years ago in Bellevue. Up in Woodridge, I, it, it was interesting in seeing, watching people going up and down, curving around like this, going more than 30 miles an hour. We can put signs up, but if, that doesn't really deter a lot of people, so it's, it's a, you're, you're, you're in a tough spot, we are in a tough spot. You know, I appreciate the work we're doing on, I'm just concerned about making sure we're, we're latching on to the things that will make a difference in all that, and that's, that's one of the things you work on all the time, but it's just, all I'm seeing is, this is, this is a real serious problem, and we all need to get together and, and help, and help you as our staff working on this, is how can we do a better job, and how can we help you from this, the, you know, council level, and from the community, I think, that wants that. But we're, and we're growing so fast, so that's, there are a lot of challenges, and you know that, but really appreciate your work in presenting this, I just, I'm just hoping that we're getting on board on this and, and increasing our work on this now, not waiting till later, because if this line keeps going up, we're going to be in real trouble on that.
Thank you.
So, but I really appreciate the work you're doing, you're really doing great work, and we just need to work together, and we need to, to do what we can to, to help you, and the community needs to know to help to do that. So that's my, my observation.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Benhamir. Nice to have you back, Franz. You are the initiator of the Vision Zero concept, which is a good concept, and the, not one fatality can be tolerated, or should be tolerated. So I think that's a real, you know, good goal, objective. But as you see, since it's not working out that way from the chart, you know, we're looking at, and so the thing we need to do is, we need to be looking at the situation, analyze thoughtfully, and it's very clearly demonstrated, you know, when others are going down, we're going up in 2015, '19, and then right now, 2024. We should be able to examine, I'm, you're, you're the guy to be able to do that, because you'd be the most interested, concerned person to figure out why. What, what happened? What happened? Right? We're going with the trend, well, that's okay, but when we're going against the trend, I hope we can get some answers, so that we can get some thoughtful solutions. Okay, let's get that first. And I, I, I believe that we have a great staff, our transportation staff. I, I think, I think I cut my teeth on transportation. I worked for Boeing building airplanes. I started my connection with, with Bellevue on the Transportation Commission when we first formed it, and I became the chair, and I worked through a lot of, you know, different issues and challenges. So I think it's very important, and this is something that we can solve. So I think it's very important, and this is something that we can solve. Our transportation staff, you're smart. We have a smart city initiative. You got all kinds of things. Technology is coming out from Gazooch, you know, LIDAR, and working with T-Mobile. Everybody, you know, I think you know that. You know, we're no longer, as council members, we're, we're not up to speed, you know, so the solution is in your hands. But I believe that if you come up with thoughtful solutions by looking at what happened during those periods, into situations that is not as expected, you'll come up with the right solutions. So I completely trust you. I'm not going to ask you, look at this, look at that, how about this and that? I mean, how do I know? If you don't know, you shouldn't be sitting at the chair there. Right? So I, I think that if you focus on the, the real problems, and we have complete confidence in you, working with the technology people we have right here in our region, and if not here, there are people elsewhere. So I feel that, you know, I, I really appreciate the chart, the presentation, and we're still keeping to our goals, and we'll come up with solutions. So thank you for sticking in, and thank you for working hard. You, you'll get the right answer. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Suleja Waria.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, by the way. I mean, I think as a mother with three young children, safety is the first, right? So looking, when you would look at the data for the fatality, do we have data about what's the percentage of people that's going to hurt us, our kids, our parents with strollers, our elderly who's taking extra time? Do we have data on that? Can we, can you share with me in the future?
Yeah, we can definitely share that. We, there, there are some encouraging trends, just to flag, and we'll, we'll, we'll compile a series of one-pagers over the year and share those out as well. We're going to, the first one will be on pedestrian safety, the second one will be on speeding, and so we'll, we'll provide those. But there are some encouraging trends. I know this, when you look at this in totality, it's, it's discouraging. Past decade, DUI has been dropping as a contributing factor, distraction has been dropping. So it's, what we're focusing on right now, speeding and what's happening at intersections are really where we need to be focusing based on the data. And we also have it segmented by demographics, so we can provide all of that.
Yeah, that's helpful, because I think, I remember a few years ago, a mother and child, I think they were killed, and, and I think that really break everybody's heart in the community, right? But I think that when you look at this, I'm really, I think I'm really proud that you, this is a multi-action way to funnel through for the common goal of the public safety. And I love, there's so many different projects going at the same time with the one main goal of the public safety, which is brilliant. And thank you for that. One other question is, I like the idea of the digital infrastructure where, you know, it's extra time for that, the residents that needs, needs extra love, needs some extra time passing. And then, so I was wondering, other than the prolong of time, any other technology are we adding to like reminding people or like other things we adding to maybe somebody who's blind or somebody who cannot hear deaf or like anything else are we adding to that?
Yeah, so with our technology pilot right now, the one that we have the federal funds for, the goal in that project is not only to be able to see pedestrians, but also look at other attributes like wheelchair users, pedestrians with a walking device as well. So if we can see that, then we can make inferences that they'll need more time as well. Those can all be inputs into the system. And those, you know, some of the operational thresholds, like how much more time, still to be determined. Right now, we're trying to explore whether the technology is capable, competent of doing that. If they, if it is, then in our stage two grant, which we'll be applying for this summer, hopefully that would help us to build some additional use cases around. We built some additional use cases out as well. We have some great ideas for more than the four that we are currently charged with delivering on with the federal government, and that will be part of our stage two grant, which is valued at $15 million. So a lot more potential for us to do more and scale it up as well. And all of those features, looking at all sorts of vulnerable road users, all within scope of the next stage, for sure.
Great, thank you.
Good questions. So I'm sensing a consensus that this council is eager to do as much as we can and more, hopefully, but, you know, we have constraints. So maybe at the mid buy or our next retreat, we can talk about our wish list and how we might approach that with different funding mechanisms, whether it's grants or, or you, whatever you come up with, we'd like to know about.
Great.
Is that a fair assessment? Okay. All right, great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, I will let you- You know that the deputy mayor has joined the meeting. I don't know that he wanted to come in, but he is now in attendance.
Okay, great. That's good to know. Okay, so I think we should take like a quick break. Is that okay? Like a five-minute break before we get to our, our next action? I have to powder my nose. So we have Councilmember Malakutian on our call now. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, so I will remember to call on him as well. All right, City Manager, would you like to bring up this action item?
Yes, Mayor, council members. So this is an item that we are seeking council direction on tonight. In February, the city received a notice of intent, a petition for annexation from property owners in the Bellevue's, Bellevue's potential annexation area near Cougar Mountain and Lakemont. And we have staff from our community development department here, Kate Nessie, our planning manager, and Tara Johnson is back to introduce this item for council.
Thank you, City Manager Carlson. Good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. So tonight, as City Manager Carlson mentioned, we've received, we're here before council because we've received a notice of intent to petition for annexation from two property owners, who you also heard during public comment, in Bellevue's potential annexation area, which is right outside our city limits, adjacent to the Cougar Mountain, Lakemont So tonight, we're asking council to consider whether or not to accept the notice of intent. If council chooses to accept the notice, then the annexation process will begin, and we'll talk about that. However, we want to note that it does not obligate council to annex the parcels by making, taking this action tonight. Council chooses to reject the notice of intent, the process ends, and the decision is not So we're going to start off with providing some background on the process. We'll provide council with information on the boundary for the proposed annexation area. We'll also discuss both the fiscal and policy impacts to the city as a result of the proposed annexation, should the council decide to accept the petition. We'll also touch on the pros and cons of moving forward with the annexation and conclude with next steps. I'm going to turn things over to Kate Nessie. She's going to talk, start us off with talking about the process.
Thanks so much. The process is not a short one. We expect it will take 12 to 18 months from beginning to end. It began on February 19th, when two property owners submitted the NOI. Council has 60 days to accept or reject that notice, and that's the period that we're in right now. If council chooses to accept the NOI, then staff would work with the property owners to make available to them a petition for annexation. And then there's the time to collect the signatures and get them to the county for certification. If 60% of the property owners, based on valuation, sign a petition for annexation, then it would come back to the council, and the council would set a, a hearing. So that if the council chooses to accept the NOI, the time between tonight and that public hearing is the time that staff would do the analysis to inform your decision about whether to annex these properties. If the council votes to annex, then it will pass to the Boundary Review Board for review and conclude with an interlocal agreement between Bellevue and King County, transferring the authority for this area. This is the remaining potential annexation area. As Tara said, it's just to the southeast of the city, adjacent to the Cougar, Lakemont neighborhood and the King County Wildlands Regional Park. The, a notice of intent to petition for annexation included 27 parcels. All of the parcels in blue are the ones that were included. The dark blue are the signatories, the people who submitted the, the NOI. And they, they, those are four parcels. The, the total number of parcels in this area is 28 parcels. Staff recommend modifying the, modifying it to include that additional parcel and retain the equivalent zoning for, for those parcels. The, as was mentioned earlier, the same property owners filed a notice of intent in 2022, and council chose to reject the NOI at that time because of the staff workload, primarily due to the comprehensive plan. Now that the comprehensive plan has been adopted, excuse me, the property owners have refiled the NOI. Since the last time they filed, both property owners have signed a pre-annexation agreement that will allow them to extend utilities. Just going to take a little sip of water. Though neither property owner has filed those permits yet. I also want to notice, remark, I should go back one slide, that the city of Bellevue owns one parcel. The parcel with the star on it is the location of our two water reservoirs. So again, staff recommends adding the one final parcel and retaining the equivalent zoning, which would be R1 for most of it, except for that parcel in the upper northeast. That's, the equivalent zoning would be R4 there. The citywide comprehensive plan supports the annexation of the remaining PAA, stipulating that the owners are subject to their proportionate share of the city's bonded indebtedness and other standards. This area is in the Newcastle subarea plan, which covers the Cougar, Lakemont neighborhood. And that plan encourages the annexation of the property prior to development. Currently, there are six houses on these 52 acres, and most of it is either vacant or occupied by our, our water reservoirs or the antenna that you see in this picture here. Accepting the NOI would be in line with the city's policy and would allow city staff to begin the analysis to inform your decision about whether to annex or not. And I'll pass it back to Tara to talk about that future analysis.
So a little bit on next steps and what the additional analysis would entail. If council accepts the notice of intent tonight, then staff would start work to start the fiscal impact analysis. We would analyze impacts as a result of the annexation, things like the property tax collection, as well as capital and operating costs for providing utility services, as well as potential impacts to our transportation system and roads. We would also look at impacts to city services, such as extending services like police and fire, as well as potentially development services, activity needed to tie in for any permitting activity as well. We would also be coordinating with the Issaquah School District to determine any revenue impacts as part of that analysis. And the other component is of course, and that's another reason why the property owners are very interested in moving forward at this time, the middle housing code amendments that are moving forward and under state law have to be adopted by June, that will provide them with additional opportunity to get more density in this area. So similar to past annexations, this project would be led by the Community Development Department, but would be a one-city effort involving staff from multiple departments, really all the departments within the city. Key departments that are impacted and are going to be very involved with the process would be our FAM, Finance and Asset Management, Utilities, Transportation, and of course, the City Attorney's Office. There are many reasons to accept the notice of intent. We talked about the, how it aligns very closely with our comprehensive plan policies, both in Volume One, as well as the Newcastle Subarea Plan. It's also the last of Bellevue's potential annexation areas, and so really makes sense to move forward with the, with the annexation. It also has, would have benefits for the operation of our city reservoir. And of course, the property owners are very motivated. As I mentioned, the middle housing code amendments provides them with the additional opportunity to get more density in the area. It also enables us to get more housing units within the city. And then, as Kate mentioned, in 2022, council determined that there weren't enough staff resources to really process the annexation. We had already started work on the periodic update, which was underway, and now we do feel like we have sufficient staff capacity to, to support this effort. So council has two options tonight. Council decides to reject the notice of intent, the process would end. Council's decision tonight, of course, is not appealable. However, the property owners could submit a notice of intent again in the future. If council decides to accept the notice of intent or modify it by adding that final parcel that we discussed, the next step is to collect signatures of at least 60% of the property owners and then submit those signatures to the county. During that period, we'd conduct the analysis that we described, and then council could be informed of the full impact of the annexation when it comes back to you for a vote. Accepting the notice of intent tonight, of course, does not obligate the council to ultimately annex this area. Throughout the process, the city will work with King County to adhere that the timeline is laid out in compliance with state law for the direct petition method of annexation. So with that, we're requesting council to direct staff to take action to accept the notice of intent to petition for an annexation, to geographically modify it, to include the three additional parcels in the potential annexation area, to maintain the equivalent zoning category in Bellevue's land use code, and stipulate that all properties will assume their proportionate share of the city's bonded indebtedness upon annexation. So with that, that concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions you have.
Great job. For, for, I mean, other than that this is a multifaceted action, it's very straightforward, and you presented it really well. So if we decide to move forward tonight, this is one of two council actions that we'll be taking. So I feel comfortable accepting this modification to include the additional parcels, so I'm, I'm eager to move forward with the next step. Let's see, let me ask Councilmember Malak, I mean, Deputy, sorry, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, before I forget that he's on the call.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I am also looking forward to, first of all, accept this and moving forward with this. I am very interested to learn from Tara and Kate when they come back on the detailed breakdown of the, of some of these finance details and the projection. So when, especially, I know, what are the cost and projection of that for the next five, 10 years of what is this maintenance commitment would look like? I would love to see those numbers. The other thing I'm very interested to see is, we are doing a lot of housing density- The other thing I'm very interested to see is, we are doing a lot of housing density requirements for the city. How might this impact our infrastructure planning and capacity needs for this area? Is, that's something that I'm also interested to see from your analysis. Thank you so much. Great presentation.
Great. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, also, I want to give you kudos on a great presentation, especially on the considerations. And underneath that on Slide 12 there, it's very clear that this makes a lot of sense for the city of Bellevue, and we absolutely should move forward with that. For, I mean, for the water reservoirs alone, this makes a lot of sense, so I'm happy to move forward with this. I agree with the mayor in terms of adding that additional parcel. My only question is regarding the, the zoning evaluation. Couldn't we initiate that immediately during this petition and as we start working with King County, et cetera? Or do we have to get through that piece first before we can start doing the evaluation?
Council can provide direction for staff to do that analysis, so we can look at a different zoning, and what that, and what that entails in terms of, because that would mean additional, even more density, because the, the comparative zoning is R1. In terms of having the zoning in place, that would have, that would have to happen. Once the annexation process is complete, we would have to amend the comprehensive plan to incorporate this area into the city, you know, assign the land use, appropriate land use designation, and then the zoning would have to change.
Okay.
So it'd be a multi-step process.
Yeah, okay. But we can initiate that tonight. Does that need a head nod, or do we need to incorporate that into the motion?
You could incorporate it into the motion. My understanding for the city attorney's office is we need to document this in our minutes. So if, if we could get council affirmation and direction on it.
Terrific. Well, unless there's any objection, I will do that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and go down, since we're kind of halfway through the comments. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great, thank you, appreciate the presentation. I don't have any questions, ready to move forward.
Councilmember Stokes.
What he said.
Councilmember Lee.
No, seriously, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Councilmember Lee.
I always have questions. That's why I'm here for. This cost involved, I really appreciate Deputy Mayor's question, you know, what are the costs? What may be the future costs? And of course, I know there's benefits, right? I talked to you a little bit earlier. And it's a, you have to do more analysis, you know, it's just a preliminary look at it. And I think that's all we probably need, you know, because we haven't had the time, the staff, to look into it. But at least I like to know, you know, something, and at least I want to have these more look at and studied, so that we know the benefit's going to exceed cost. The benefit is like, you know, Deputy Mayor mentioned, maybe the housing opportunities. We know we need more housing, and so that's good. And there may be others, I don't know, right? So I would like to explore that. And then the cost, we know that when we annex something, we have the responsibility of providing services, right? It doesn't make sense, and we just keep on, you know, giving money away, not expecting any benefit. So you mentioned this, the last piece, right? That's it? What's the area around the brown area, around the proposed annexation area? Is it part of Bellevue already, or is it still future potential annexation area? Or can, if it provides benefit, should, should we consider including in this annexation?
Are, are you talking about the, the green area to the southeast?
No, no, just north of it.
That, that is already part of Bellevue.
Oh, okay, so that's what I'm asking. That's inside, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You mentioned east, so now I'm curious too, what's the east? Is that south, southeast, that's also part of Bellevue already?
To the east, you can see kind of a gray area. That is the potential annexation area for Issaquah.
Okay. How about south of that, the, the green area?
The green area is King County Wildlands Park.
Okay, good, so we're gonna touch it, all right?
Yes.
So this is really it?
That's it.
I'm happy. So I would say that based on the initial analysis that you look at, or potentially, I think it's worth while to, you know, there's more benefit than hopefully cost, so I would support that. So I do have one question before I go say 100%. We just had a safe Cokie process, project. How far is that from here, and how would this annexation with the idea that we have, that we're going to do in this annexed area, impact the decision we made in safe Cokie? Or is there's any related relationship, or it doesn't have any potential objection?
So this area is at the top of a hill, and it doesn't, all of the area, all of the water will run off into our creeks. I, I don't know the impact on this, on Cold Creek specifically, but that's something that we could look into?
Safe Cokie is basically saving the whole area to preserve a natural area for the city, for the region. So I just want to be sure this is consistent, so that we don't get into a situation where the residents would just help to do the safe Cokie project, to come to, gee, you guys just bought a whole bunch of property, and now you're gonna disrupt so save Cokie concept. I'm just bringing it up. I think this, this should be, if you don't know the answer, I hope you do before you go full bore. But if you don't, I think this should be a serious consideration, so we're not getting into hornless nest.
We can certainly include that in our analysis.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Sumatwaria.
I don't have any questions, I'm ready to move.
Okay, let's hear your motion.
I moved to geographically modify the notice of intent petition for annexation to include the additional parcel in the potential annexation area, to include an early zoning evaluation, and accept the notice of intent to petition with the modification, require that all properties will assume their seven proportionate share of the city's bonded indebtedness upon annexation, and maintain the equivalent zoning category in Bellevue's land use code.
Second.
Did you, I couldn't, didn't hear you say that.
Yes, I included that.
Perfect, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, perfect, passes, thank you. All right, we have one more item of business here, and I'm going to say that we have a council member that has served the city for a long time. I think he started as a school board member, very involved with our public schools, was on the parks board, Parks and Community Services Board, and now has served on the Bellevue City Council for 14 years. And he is a very valued member of our council team, and he has an, an announcement he would like to make. Councilmember Stokes.
Well, thank you, Mayor. This is an announcement of my resignation of my city council seat as of May 2, 2025. My intent when I ran for fourth term on the amazing city council and this great city was to serve until the end term in December 31, 2027. But, you know, in life, things change. I'm getting older, which is okay. I mean, but I will be 88 then, so. But most importantly, and the real reason, is my delightful daughter, Genevieve, had a baby girl a month, a little over a month ago, and decided to move, and I decided to move to Ballard, where she's been living, and live my life out with her. Bettina, my wife, and her mother passed away from Alzheimer's during the panic and everything, and so this is, is gonna work out very well for us. I will miss Bellevue, its people and its places, and most of all, you here in this room, and all the people I have known in my 34 years of living in Bellevue. 20 years involved with Woodridge Elementary, Chinook Middle School, and Bellevue High School, as well as state education and advancement, and a whole lot of, of that, that type of thing. And 14 great years with Bellevue City Council, and many organizations and official entities such as several King County boards and commissions, Cascade Water Alliance, other state agencies, and a world of great opportunities in the communities and businesses in our city and neighborhood cities as well. I'm looking forward to sharing this work that I have done later, before I leave, and engaging in my 14 years with, with Bellevue Committee, City Council. That'd be later, before I ride off into the sunset. So, thank you very much, I'm, okay, I won't cry, but that's okay.
We're, we're crying with you.
Yeah, so.
It's hard to, when you're a good leader, it's hard to step down, and you certainly have a valid reason to be doing that, and so we admire you, and we're very happy for you. But of course, we're gonna miss you. But here's the good news, we still need you in a lot of things. You've been involved with East Trail, and the arts, and schools, and we are going to continue to mine you for that.
Okay. Yeah, I could, I can come back, I get a lift, I, I can't drive my car anymore, but Genevieve doesn't let me do that.
We'll, we'll make it work.
Yeah, no, seriously, that would be great. I, I don't want to lose contact.
No, we, we need you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for that, and I'm going to ask our clerk if she can kind of discuss what our options are on a process at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. The council can choose from a couple of different options. You certainly are very familiar with the process that we just ran through when you appointed Councilmember Sumatwaria. You do have an option to look at the remaining four finalists and make a decision if the council so chooses to appoint someone from that pool, or you can certainly give me direction, and we can run through a new recruitment process.
So right now, we have a choice between opening up another recruitment process and repeating what we just did not very long ago, or going with the four finalists and making a choice from there.
Yes, and I have a schedule built for both of those options, that both will lead you to a potential of an appointment before the May 6 council meeting.
Can we just kind of discuss this for a moment? What, what, and I have to, you have to recuse yourself now, but I'll start. Councilmember Hamilton, do you have a preference?
Yeah, I do. I just think since we've recently completed this process, to fill Councilmember Zahn's seat with a number of highly qualified candidates, and I'm in favor of appointing one of the candidates that's already been interviewed. I think a big part of what motivated me to want to push the process forward with Councilmembers on so quickly was to get us back to full strength as soon as possible. And I think that I, I still maintain that priority, and I think since we, we've done this work, and we have a good pool of candidates, that I'd like to see us choose from one that we've already interviewed.
Okay. Councilmember Sumatwaria, do you have a preference?
Yeah, so for me, I think that, I mean, I just went through that process, right? And then, like, as we know, because, does this seat have to go through the election in November?
Yes.
Okay. So, because, for me, from my personal experience, I think it's gonna be, it takes a lot of courage, and also investment or risk to put ourselves out there, to be in this position. So I think that it's only fair for this next person to have full time to be able to start running for the seat in the fall. So I think the earlier we can pick from the, the highly qualified candidate will be better, because that's more fair.
So going with the finalists?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Council, Deputy Mayor Malakutian.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I even talk about that, I just wanted to mention that how selfless Councilmember Stokes is, the reason after these many years is leaving is because to help his daughter and newborn grandkid. That's such an admiring selfless act. Sorry, Mayor, I needed to say that. I, I'm so emotional. Me and Councilmember Stokes have a very unique relationship. Yes, I am also aligned with both Councilmember Hamilton and Sumatwaria. I think we went through a very extensive interview process after 20 people. We had amazing five top candidates, and we have a hard time to even select one out of those five. So I think we have a great, strong pool, and we just need to get together and just review that one more time, and be able to select another person to replace the empty seat till November. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and to clarify, as we just mentioned with Councilmember Sumatwaria, whoever is chosen for this seat will have to run this November. Councilmember Newenhouse.
Just a question for clarification, city clerk. You said in both scenarios, we can get it done by May 6?
Yeah, would you like to see the proposed schedule?
I, I would, I'm just kind of curious how that would work.
Sure, I will share my screen and unmute this. So putting this here for the, if the council were to choose a recruitment, we would begin that process tomorrow and run that the exact same way that we ran the last recruitment a few weeks ago. It would be open for a 10-day period. We would close on a Friday afternoon, deliver you the packets. On the April 15 meeting, you could review the candidates in executive session, then come out into regular session, as you did last time, name the candidates you would like to move forward for interview. Then at the following meeting on the 22nd, you would interview those candidates, again discuss qualifications of those folks. And then you could, as early as that meeting, come out onto the record in regular session and make an appointment. That appointment wouldn't be effective until, the date here is May 5, but since Councilmember Stokes did just say May 2 would be his effective date, the effective appointment, I would suggest, should be May 3. And then no meeting on the 29th, because that's the fifth Tuesday, and then May 6 would be the first meeting that the new council member would attend.
Just a little bit torn on this. I mean, there's no doubt we have four outstanding candidates to, to select from. On the other hand, I'd also like making it the opportunity open again for anyone who maybe was thinking about applying, but didn't, for whatever reason that might be. But I, I, I think I'll, I'll join my colleagues in making a, a direct appointment from the four that we have. I feel confident that we have some qualified individuals there, certainly because they made our top five. So I'm gonna go with that. Thank you.
Can you show that process?
Yeah, that is here on this screen. So same, we would do the executive session on the 15th. If you give me that direction this evening, we'll put that on the agenda. You can discuss the qualifications of those remaining four finalists, and then if you are ready, you can come out as early as that evening to make a decision. Again, the effective date here would be changed to May 3, not May 5.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, oh, yeah.
Sorry, one follow-up. If we go into that executive session there, and we cannot, I guess, come to some kind of decision on who the individual should be, for whatever reason, and then we opt to go to the open recruitment, can we still pivot to that, or is it too late at that point?
Pivot on the evening of the 15?
Yeah, is that too late?
Definitely not too late. There certainly is no, there is no driver to have this done by May 6. The 90-day period applies in this situation, as it did in Councilmember Zahn's resignation. So you have 90 days from date of vacancy to make the appointment.
Even if we've surpassed the May 9 date, will they still then?
That, that is a consideration to take into account here, that filing week is May 5 through May 9.
Right.
If you appoint someone, that person, someone would have to file within that week, even if your appointment was after that filing period was over. They would have to essentially file to run for the position, not knowing that they would be appointed.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Good clarification.
Since we decide by majority vote, since I'm the last person to ask, really, it's my, my, my material. So I go with whatever the majority goes.
Would you like to make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
You don't. I, I, if, I've heard a clear majority to move- to move forward with adding an exec session to the agenda on the 15th, and we'll go from there.
Good. Okay, that's great. Well, thank you. We do not have a meeting next week, but we will be back on April 5th. No, is it April 15th? Yes, April 15th. And with that, we are adjourned.